Angelo, Natali, and Bobby Correia are on today with us. And I forwarded to everyone a letter that I received from Bobby and Angelo on January 20th. So Angelo, I'm just gonna let you and Bobby speak and just maybe briefly go over what you wrote in the letter.
Okay, I'll take the lead on this, and I'm sure Bobby will have some things to add. Make a long story short, we have, because of certain circumstances, decided to approach the AIDA with some incentive programs for the project. Because we are getting very worried that the project may come to a little bit of a stall here shortly because of some of the things that we've encountered over the past year. I mean, we couldn't have possibly started this project in the worst possible time with the pandemic. And, you know, it took almost four years to get the project approved. And when we did start, you know, things seemed to be able to move smoothly. But then we encountered the pandemic. And what we're seeing right now is we've had long, long delays because of the labor. We've got, each building is gonna be costing us over $200,000 per building on increased lumber, increased supplies. And, you know, these are things, we've carried this project for a long time now. And with these additional carrying costs because of labor shortages and timing and the additional pricing, it's just making it an insurmountable hurdle right now. And we thought if we talked to the Amherst IDA, that they would offer some sort of incentive. And it comes in the form of three ways. One, it gives you a little bit of a mortgage break, but that's offset with their fee. They usually offset each other. A sales tax abatement, and as well as a real estate abatement. So, I guess what you may be asking yourselves, what is the economic impact to the village? Because we also thought of that as well. The real estate tax abatement through the AIDA, it's a program where you pay 50% of the, 50% of what they realize taxes. And then it increases every year 5% from a zero to seven-year to 10-year period. So essentially, right away, we will be paying more taxes than what we're paying currently right now. And the taxes will start to increase over, it's 5% increase every year. So there is a little bit of an economic impact. I mean, it helps us out right now. And in terms of the village perspective, you will be receiving still more than what it's generating at its current rate right now. And, you know, that's kind of it in a nutshell. We're looking for your support. Given everything that we've gone through, we've had increased numbers all the way across the board from when we started this. And like I said, we couldn't have started this project in the worst possible time with the pandemic that we've encountered. So, you know, if we can't get your support, I guess the alternative would be no opposition. And I guess that's why we're here today. Bobby, do you have anything to add?
No, Ange, I think, you know, you pretty much hit the nail on the head. But, you know, as he explained, the impact this is gonna have on the project, we wanna keep things rolling, we wanna keep things moving. We don't wanna encounter any other delays going forward. We feel like we're kind of hitting stride over there. But, you know, we're talking three quarters of a million, maybe more, in cost overages now. Even though, even if we do get this assistance from the IDA, it doesn't offset that entirely. But it makes it at least a little bit more palatable and puts us in a position to be able to push this thing to the finish line and get it done. Our hope was to have all three of these apartment buildings open this year. I think we'll still have, you know, the first building that's already framed now, that will certainly be open and possibly one more if we can push things quicker. But we still wanna get, you know, we wanna start that second building and start that third building immediately. So this AIDA assistance would allow us to do that. And would, you know, hopefully, we don't, you know, hopefully things continue to trend upwards. And, you know, with the vaccine out, this, you know, hopefully the impact in our industry will allow us to kind of make up some lost ground here. But, you know, the unknown is, you know, scary thought. So, like Ian said, you know, we're just looking for, you know, some encouragement from the village. And, you know, so we can let the Amherst IDA know that you're behind us on this and you, you know, have similar interest as we do in this, that we wanna get it done and get the project open and looking beautiful.
Okay, so I did ask Judy to call over to the Amherst IDA and get a little bit more of how it would implicate us from a tax standpoint. So she spoke with Dave Manjoya today. So I'm gonna let Judy give an update on that conversation.
Okay, first of all, anything through the IDA would not affect the townhouses. The tax implication for the townhouses would just be like regular properties. The only thing it would implicate is the apartment buildings. And the way it works is whatever the assessed value is currently, that wouldn't change. And that amount would be taxed at 100%. Each year, any increased value is what gets taxed at the incremental rates through the IDA. So let's say after the first year, their assessment goes up $100,000. That $100,000 would then be taxed at 55%. And then the next year, it would be 60%. It would go up by 5% for 10 years till it hits 100%. And then it goes back on the tax roll.
So what type of loss would that be then for us from a village tax standpoint?
Dave Manjoya said he couldn't really tell us exactly, but he thought it's approximately a third of the taxes over a 10-year period.
Okay, anything else?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Hey Judy, so what, I read the letter earlier, and it doesn't really give the amount they're asking for. But that does not matter in terms of our taxes as to what monies they want and which monies from the IDA, you know what I'm saying?
We wouldn't be giving them any money. We would be giving them...
Not us, no, no, we don't give them money. But the money that they're borrowing or getting bonded or whatever, that does not affect us at all.
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So it doesn't matter what they bond at, how much it is, that does not affect us. It's just the value of the property.
Right.
What it's assessed at, okay, thank you.
Yeah, the only effect for us, Eileen, would be the decrease in tax revenue that we would be receiving.
Okay, thank you.
So Judy, it's not really gonna be a decrease. It's what, it's a decrease in what we thought would be coming online.
Right.
For the next year.
Right, it's a decrease in the increased tax revenue.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, but the base amount, where it starts at, that stays at 100% every year. It's only the increase that is on the tiered rates.
So the current assessed value?
Yes.
If I'm, I mean, I don't remember, I don't know the last time the town assessed the property, but I'm assuming it's probably, you know, and maybe Angelo or Bobby can answer this. But I'm assuming that the assessed value today is probably roughly equivalent to what it was when you purchased the property, right?
I believe so. There's multiple properties.
Essentially pre-development, right? I mean, it's essentially the... So it's, okay.
So it's assessed at pre-development and not when the buildings and the apartments are ready to rent? Is that correct?
That's, right.
Each year, the assessed value would reflect improvements to the property. So if, you know, depending on, if they did 100% and it was totally finished in the first year?
Yeah.
Then the improvements of the addition would be charged at a tax of 50% of that assessed value, of the increased assessed value. And then the next year, it would be 55%. Then it would be until you get to 100% in 10 years.
So if the assessed value today is $10, and the assessed value after the 100% post-development work is complete is $20, then we would receive 100% of the taxes on the first 10.
Right.
And then a diminished return on the second 10 on an escalating scale. So 55 cents, or $5 the first year, $6 the next year, $7 the year after that, until you got to the full $20 assessed value after a series of seven to 10 years. And then from that point on, you would be receiving taxes on the full assessed value from there into perpetuity.
So after 10 years?
Whatever the term of the pilot is, yes.
Yeah, it's a 10-year pilot.
All right, now, these are rental, these are gonna be rental apartments, correct?
Yes.
So, and there are 90 units, from what I read. So if they, if they're rented at $2,000 a month, the 90 units, that's over 2.1 million a year if they have full occupancy within the first year, correct? So how would that benefit us? Because they're making 2.1 million that first year if they have full occupancy.
Well, they're also paying off a substantial construction loan as well.
But I understand that. But I just wanted to kind of put that into perspective as well, Matt, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so Eileen's point is, you know, she gets that, your point, Matt. But I think what she's getting at is that, you know, how does that benefit the residents of the village?
Thank you.
How does the pilot resident benefit the residents of the village?
Yeah, how does that, sure, how does the pilot benefit the residents of the village? Because that's what we're discussing.
So not to answer this question for Bobby and Angelo, but based on their cost overruns, what it could theoretically mean is that they would be forced to curtail the project at, say, 60 units, or even 30. And the full developmental assessed value of the property would diminish exponentially from that point because it's now an underdeveloped property. So the taxes accrued from that underdeveloped property would be exponentially more than what you're losing from the pilot.
However, one could argue that the residents, one of the reasons, and I think the biggest reason that this project took three-plus years to come to fruition is the fact that there was such a pushback from our village residents due to the density of the project in that particular neighborhood. There was chatter about building a second road, in fact, out of the development to, you know, get some of that traffic out of there. So I guess, you know, my concern, my concern with this is twofold. My first concern is, I mean, I realize nobody had a crystal ball and looked and saw COVID coming, but I think that anytime the IDA approves these type of projects, it's usually at the inception of the project, not three and a half years into it. And my second issue that I have is I think what Eileen is kind of getting at as well is that, you know, the whole idea for, the whole concept of putting density in our historic village was to increase the tax revenue. My understanding has always been that that was the reason, the argument for, you know, having a project like on Evans or having a project like the Natali Development on California. So when we're using that argument to present this to our 5,500 residents, it would almost seem not appropriate to then go ahead and sign off on something that is going to take away the very concept of why we were initiating or moving these types of projects forward. So I think...
But it's not, but it's not taking it away. It's, it is reducing it in the short term, but it's not like it ceases to exist.
But it does cease to exist in that short term, in that 10-year period.
Yeah, so roughly, roughly 30% of the projected property tax, real estate taxes over a 10-year period are projected to be reduced on that, that single property. But it is still 60% more than that property is currently earning.
Sure, I get that.
Right? More importantly, in 10 years' time, it will be 100% more, or more than that property is earning. I mean, Bobby and Angelo, rough numbers. What do you think the assessed value of that property is when you bought it? And what do you think the assessed value is when you're done? I mean, order of magnitude.
Sure, I don't know the exact number because it's like seven parcels combined, put together. I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 or $700,000 total.
Okay.
All properties combined, you know, completed. We're probably talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 to $14 million.
$12 to $14 million versus $600,000 to $700,000. That is a, that is an order of magnitude of 2,000 times more. Do you think 60% of 2,000 is worth having?
No, Matt, no, I get what you're saying. But we were, I'm just concerned with that 10-year span. Why can't we be making that full amount immediately? That's kind of what the village residents were promised, you know? Rather than now it's 10 years down the road, somewhere we're gonna finally make the full amount. You understand what I'm saying?
I understand.
I do, but, 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 but here's, but listen to what I'm saying.
I'm listening, Matt, I hear you.
If you reduce the developable assessed value of the property, you will never, ever receive the promised value. It will just not exist.
Well, you're going on the assumption, though, Matt, that this project will indeed be completed someday and will be at that value. I mean, it's been three and a half years already. And, you know, can you sit here and honestly say that you think this project will fully come to fruition and be completed as it was intended to when we began discussing it three years ago?
I have no reason to doubt that, why would you? Bobby and Angelo are here right now. Bobby just said that their current schedule would put them 100% complete with all three buildings this year, and their fingers crossed, hoping that, you know, COVID restrictions being what they are, they can meet that. What, I mean, on the other hand, if you take $1 million or $1.5 million, whatever the total sum of all those six-digit numbers are in this letter, and you carve that off of their expenditures, they run out of money to finish the third building. Plain and simple. And being in the development world, I know that they just can't go knocking on their banker's door and be like, oops, we need another million and a half. It ain't gonna happen. So hard decisions will be made. And hard decisions will be made to reduce the developability of that property. More importantly, that totally skews all of their projections, their revenues, their paybacks, their mortgages, everything. I mean, it would throw them completely out of whack. And then you could almost guarantee that that project will stall and die and be an eyesore for the village. I mean, it is, not to put too fine a point on it and not to sound too pro-development here, but I don't think you have a firm understanding of just how dire the development world is right now. There is a lot of this happening, a lot.
Right, and that's what Dave Manjoya told me.
We are not, you know, this is not an island, this is not unique to this project. And, you know, if you want, if you want any quality at all, you gotta buy into the idea that, you know, money doesn't grow on trees. And I'm sorry, but the delta on a $12 million post-development assessed value versus a $600,000 current assessed value, even if we went to 700, hell, let's round it to a million. That's an $11 million delta that they will be paying 55% of the real estate taxes on. That sum of money alone eclipses the current revenue on that property by tenfold. It'd be insane and greedy and inconsiderate to even think otherwise. Not to mention the fact that it sends a really, really negative message to the development world. And you can kiss all future development in the Village of Williamsville goodbye.
I think that's, I think that's a harsh statement, Matt.
Yeah, so do I, Matt, okay.
That's like a...
Come down, good heavens.
Let's not be that dramatic.
We're just talking this through, I mean, that's what we're here for.
Yeah. My understanding is that, you know, I don't believe, and Chip, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I don't think we need, this needs to be a board resolution. I think what the IDA was simply asking for was a letter of support from the village before they considered, you know, proceeding forward with this. So we haven't heard from Basil and Al, I'm interested in your comments and thoughts.
Yes. Is the town going to be given the same tax rate that they're asking from us?
I think they were excluded, I think the townhomes are excluded, right, guys?
Yes.
No.
No, no, I think Angelo was... The town of Amherst.
Not the town, the town.
I assume Angelo and Bobby can answer this, but I assume that the abatement would apply to town taxes as well as...
Town and school.
Yes, that's correct.
Have you, you've spoken with the town then?
You know, we...
Can't hear you.
Didn't hear that, Angelo.
We had spoken with the town, and the town recommended that we look at you for guidance on our first point of contact. And that I thought that we would get their, I don't know if we're gonna get their support, but they thought that we would start with you.
And what about, what about the school district? I mean, I assume that's the biggest chunk of your tax bill.
It's town, it's town taxes, yes.
But my question was, have you also reached out to the school district?
No, I did not.
But the abatement would normally go to all three, the town and the school district? Is that what's normal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the IDA has the ability to bait taxes at all three levels.
Al, do you have any comments on it?
Just, just to, I guess, I think this was already answered. But just to, again, clarify, so I think everyone's there, including myself. What you're seeking from the Amherst IDA, what you plan to seek from the Amherst IDA would be an abatement from, that would apply to village real estate taxes, town real estate, and your school district taxes, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And a portion of the sales tax, I think, on some of the supplies.
Yeah, that was another part, you're right.
Right, there's a mortgage and the taxes, that's a separate thing. But just in terms of the real estate taxes, we're talking about all three levels that tax them, the village, the town, and the school.
Yeah, you know, for me, it's, you know, it's, it's a bad place to be. And I don't think any of us have a choice of sitting where we are. And, you know, it's, it's a risk if we don't help. Because we do, if we, if the project does get shut down because the village isn't able to help, or it's sold and the project changes, who knows what could happen is the risk I think we look at as a board of not working with somehow. You know, for me, I'd love to see, do you know the timeline on the rest of the townhomes? Since that will definitely bring us more sales, property taxes? Or does it as well? Because I thought the full value was gonna go, so will the assessment change on the, on the townhomes as they're built?
I don't think the town, I don't think the townhomes is, we're not talking about the townhomes with the abatement, it doesn't affect it.
Okay.
Right.
The, it's just on the apartment. And, you know, we're facing a lot of issues, even with the state, with no evictions and stuff, or other apartment projects, it's a gamble right now. It's a tough situation where we're at right now. Not only monetarily, but we're also with the expectation that we're gonna lease this up as quickly as possible. That's even a gamble right now at this point. We're sitting on very uneasy times right now, I think everybody is. And especially, Matt had mentioned, especially as a developer. It's a very tough situation, and we've been contemplating this for over a month now. Do we stand still, not move forward, do we continue to move forward? And, you know, this was suggested to us, and we have to, we have to take a look at anything that's gonna make this project successful in our eyes. It's, like I said, it's a very big risk right now that we're taking. And, and, you know, we wouldn't be talking about this, but we faced some major, major hurdles with this project, and it's continuing. And it doesn't seem to be easing up at all, and we're in a tough spot. So that's the reason why we're looking for this assistance, and it's just pertaining to the apartments.
So Chip, do we, how would we go about coming to some agreement or disagreement onto whether or not we would authorize a letter of support? Is it like we can do a straw vote now, or, you know, I mean, how do we do this?
Yeah, you can, you can, you can do that. I mean, as I understand, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I prefer, you know, I wanna, I wanna give these guys an answer, one way or another. I don't wanna drag this out, and it doesn't appear that we need a board resolution. So, you know, if I can do, you know, call for a straw vote on it, and we can, you know, kind of go from there and wrap this up one way or another, I'd like to do that. Is that okay?
Mrs. Basil, how soon must we make this decision?
Well, is that Basil? I, yeah, okay. So Basil, I just wanna, I know that they're anxious to kind of figure out what direction they're heading in or not. And so I, it's not, this isn't a decision that we need to call for a next board meeting and put a resolution on the agenda and move forward. I think it's something that we should be able to come to some conclusion tonight. And I'd like to, you know, do a straw vote, if that's okay with everyone. Is there anyone who's opposed to that?
I just don't know.
No, to be quite honest, I feel like we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. And I don't wanna see this project stop, even though I'm not in love with it. So if you're taking a straw vote, I would give a grudging yes. But I'd like to know if the town is going to agree to the same thing exactly.
Yeah.
So by giving them support tonight does not mean it's a go. It just means that you're gonna let the IDA know that you would be in support of it. The IDA will eventually have their own public hearing on it, and they will make the final determination. And I believe that the town, the school district, and the village all weigh in on it. That's my understanding after talking to them today.
For me, you know, I certainly, you know, I understand the situation, guys. And, you know, selfishly, I'd love to see it finished because it sits in my backyard, right? But take that out of the equation. And for me, is there any way in this agreement that we push to finish up the townhomes? Because then we do start to see some of that realized tax increase sooner. Is that a possibility, or are those units not sold yet?
They're not sold yet, but we, because of the smaller scale of those, the impact isn't quite as high. So we are pushing forward hard with those right now.
Okay.
We have a list of about 70 people on a VIP list that we're starting, you know, obviously the models are under construction now, so we can't show them yet. But there's a great level of interest there, and we expect those to sell very quickly. Right, selling them, you know... Right, selling them, you know, in the next one to two months, we'll start listing them publicly for sale.
Yeah, so you understand my question, if, 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 could we get a commitment that that's the push as far as finishing that first? Because I think we realize that the sale, the, the taxes on those, because you guys aren't really paying the taxes, the residents in those homes are paying those taxes.
Right.
Then, I'm just saying as a compromise, is that a fair compromise or is it even doable? Um, uh, uh, focusing on the town homes to get those filled and get hot bodies in them and start collecting taxes at least on that and finish up that other building that's already almost, you know, at least dried down a little bit, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, we, we can only, you know, build them as fast as we can sell them, but we certainly will push as fast as we can to get those sold and get them, you know, get residents living in them. You know, we're, our, our projection going into this year is to have at least twelve of them sold and finished by the end of this year. So, that's, you know, almost half of them. So, yeah, we're definitely not slowing down on those. We're gonna push those hard.
Okay, alright.
So I think, you know, my, my biggest concern is just, I go back to the whole reason that this project ended up being supported by our residents was the fact in, uh, increase in the property tax boost for us. So, um, you know, I, I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna refer, you know, to the project that's happening on Evans, you know, that's a pilot program, I believe, is, is happening with that project as well. And I just feel that, you know, we, we're seeing, you know, it isn't that we're anti-development in the village. It's just that I think we need to have smart development. And, um, we also need to, you know, if it's changing the, the facade or the face of the village by having these development projects happening, I feel that we need to get some type of benefit out of them.
Deb, you know, one thing I wanna add. You said the reason why it got approved was because of the increased tax dollars and I'm gonna disagree. This project took over four years, even prior to you, um,
Yeah.
Board. It got approved because I think there was a strong commitment that, that they thought there was a better value in what the property was and how it was being managed or operated with the, with the, uh, business that was there. And thi- this project was go, this, this, um, project, I think, had the proper zoning, uh, to be an apartment project. And when we took it over, we, we brought on a whole new look to this project, whereas it was supposed to be all apartments. Where we thought that, you know, I'm just gonna, you know, going back, we thought that adding some homeownership with the town homes was gonna make this project more, and this land more valuable. And I, and I believe we, we did that. And it took a long time to get through the process. So it wasn't just about tax dollars that were added. It was the value of having some of your residents being the Williamsville residents to stay in the Village of Williamsville and building that community. And, uh, I think we proved that. We've just come upon some hard times right now, as we all have. And, um, I, I don't think you should look at it so singularly a- and, and to say that it was all about tax dollars, because it wasn't all about tax dollars. It was a multitude of things that's, which made this project get approved. And, um, you know, I just hope you look at it that way. Um, and we are increasing the tax revenue tremendously from what it was. Uh, you're still getting what the tax revenue is, um, and was. Um, you're getting an increased, you're getting increased amount. And, um, you know, I, I think it's better that, that we do go this route versus the project sitting there unfinished. And it's quite possibly what could happen without any assistance on this, you know, what, any, you talk to any developer in Western Europe right now, that, I can't imagine them, any of them being real happy with what's going on. Retail classes being empty, uh, apartments, I can't, I can't evict tenants that haven't paid for, for six months, seven months, eight months. Can't evict them. Uh, we're in, in uncertain times right now. And I just hope, you know, you, you take a look at that when you, you make that decision. However it is, we'll respect it. Um, but, uh, you know, that's, that's, you know, my, my take on it.
No, and I, and I can respect that, Angelo, and I, that's, that's very, that's a very good thought. Um, okay, well, any, anyone else wanna comment? If not, we can kind of go in a direction of a, a vote here of what we're doing.
Uh, Deb, what happens if we don't give our approval on this? I mean, it still goes forward, right?
Yeah, so, right, so the IDA doesn't, i- it's not like they're waiting there, you know, in the office now, waiting for a signed paper from the village saying, yeah, go ahead, we support this project. I think it was more of a, a courtesy maybe that they are reaching out to us to gauge where our heads are at. So, um, you know, my understanding is that the Amherst IDA is going to make the decision, you know, but they were just maybe, like I said, looking to see where we were at.
Okay.
So. So is everyone comfortable coming to a conclusion tonight on this and giving, you know, a direction to Angelo and Bobby? Or do you, um, does anyone feel like we, they wanna do more research or speak to the IDA? Or, um, you know, going forward, how do you wanna work this?
Yeah, I think, I think we have to, I think we have to support them as mu- as hard as it is. I, I think that i- it's too risky to have it potentially fall. I, I think the detriment of that is gonna be worse than what we're giving up. It's not, as if we're, we're losing money on, we don't have something now anyway. So, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, so.
I don't know if I can say either, you know, I look ahead too and I understand the situation everybody's in. You know, and I, I know like these apartments, these units that would be built are also rentals. And now, as you said, nobody can pay rent. You know, I, the future scares me. Um, so I don't know if I should say yes or no right now. I'm really torn. Cause either way, it looks bleak.
Yeah. So Al, you, you wanna go forward with it? Basil, um, Matt, it sounds like you wanna go forward with it. Basil, where are you at?
I think the way Al thinks, that we, we have to keep it going.
Okay, so there's your three, there's your three guesses.
Yes.
Okay.
Hey Judy?
Yes.
Question for you.
Yes.
Um, what, uh, so the, um, the townhouses, they're charged at the property tax rate, the standard single family property ha- tax rate?
Yes.
What is the, what is the apartment building complex charged at?
Everything, the village charges everything at the same rate. We don't change rates for different buildings.
Really?
Yeah.
Yes. So the pilot program, whatever it's on the tax roll right now, it would be taxed at that, at the current tax rate.
Which is.
And then like I said, was it four point something?
Four point something percent, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
It is. I don't remember from one year to the next. Four point seven oh seven seven is what we were at last year.
Four point four or four point?
Four point oh seven seven.
Alright.
Four, wait a minute. Four point seven.
Seven.
Oh, seven seven.
Okay, so that on ten million. It's four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It's a tenth of our annual budget, over a tenth of our annual budget. So in the first year after it's fully developed. And that's, that's on everything, right? So it's fifty-five percent, but only on the portion that's the apartment buildings.
Right.
So it would be, it would in fact be north of fifty-five percent on average. So you'd be talking something in the range of, say, a tax cut of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the first year. Tax cut of a hundred and fifty thousand the next, a hundred and thirty the year after that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Right? So, so in raw numbers, let's say we're talking about two hundred thousand. That's what we, after it's fully developed, that's what we'd be losing out on the first year is two hundred thousand dollars. But we'd also be getting two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Which is, you know, a boost of, what, twelve percent? On our annual budget? I mean, last year, we were having trouble finding twenty-five thousand dollars. Next year, we'll be, we'll be given two hundred and eighty thousand. You know, it's like, I don't, I don't see how this is a bad thing. I, I can't, I can't figure out why that extra hundred thousand is such a deal breaker.
Yes, it's. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, we already, you know, there's already a consent, there's already a majority that says, you know, we should be in support of this. I, I guess, for, for those who aren't, I think maybe you need to talk to the ADA, AIDA and not get a better understanding of how this really, what the real net math is, because I, it's all good. Could it be better? Sure. Is it, is it gonna be detrimental? Absolutely not.
It's better than nothing.
It's, it's considerably better than nothing.
Yes.
I mean, it's heads above shoulders better than nothing.
Right.
I mean, if, if we weren't even talking about this in a percentage perspective, and I just said to you, hey, we got this development that's gonna, you know, pump two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in, in new property taxes into the budget, everyone would clap their hands and say, great. We need the money, right? But instead we're saying, oh, well, it could have been four hundred and eighty, but sorry, it's really gonna be three hundred. And everyone's like, oh gee, I don't know if that's a good thing.
Well, Matt, it should have been, not could have been. See, I mean, could and should are two very different words.
Right.
Hello, yeah. And that's where, that's why, I'm not saying I'm against it or for it, I'm just kinda stumbling. You know, this is some, this is a lot to process and, you know, decide on. I'm sorry, um.
I get it.
Well, and, and I, and I am. I agree. So I'm, what Eileen just said is, is kinda how I feel. It's, I'm not saying I'm against it and I, I can certainly hear you rattling off those numbers and, and understand that. But I, I guess conceptually, I am just making a statement from how this project was sold to the majority of the residents that have stopped me in the past three years was the increase in the taxes. Um, I, I live and walk that neighborhood every day, so I can, I can sit here and say that I've been stopped quite a bit over three years and asked many questions about that project. I know it very well. Um, so it does sound tonight that, you know, this is a board and we govern in a democracy here, still in the Village of Williamsville. And it sounds as though they have their three who are in support of this project. So my goal here tonight is to try to move things along because I know that they've got a lot going on in, with this development and they're probably anxious to get going with the IDA. So, um, they have essentially been awarded a letter of support from the Village of Williamsville tonight, um, via the three board members who are in favor of it. So, um, that's where we'll end it. If there's any other questions, um, you know, we can get that letter together and, and get it over. Angelo, maybe you can, um, give us some direction on how and when you're, you're looking to get that and we'll just move forward.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, Judy, you and I, and, um, can work on that, maybe with some help from whoever else wants to, who can help with it. And, uh, and we'll, and we'll move forward, so.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys for coming on tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate the format and the time.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, bye-bye. Okay, so, uh, into correspondence then. I have a couple of items, but I'm gonna let everyone else go first. So, um, whoever wants to go?
No correspondence.
No. Al, Basil, Matt?
Muted, no.
Okay. No? Alright, um, if nobody has anything, I'll go with what I have. I actually, Matt, the, what I'm going to talk about actually corresponds to your fence, um, your fence discussion.
Okay.
I received a phone call today or last week from Ed and Betty Zabel, who live on Pasadena. And they were requesting putting up a seven foot privacy fence in their backyard. They went, um, the, the case was sent over to, for the ZBA to hear, and I'm guessing, Matt, that this is where your, your fence issue comes up with, right?
It's one of many.
Okay, yeah. So, um, so the ZBA denied their seven foot fence. And they called me with a couple of inquiries. I guess the first would be that the village perhaps looks at giving residents the option of having a seven foot fence by a code change perhaps.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the other issue that they brought up is that if historically, they were told by our code enforcement officer that the ZBA in the past year and a half has been saying no to all fence requests for seven feet. And, uh, Ed Zabel's concern was that, well, if that's the case, then why is the village even taking the hundred dollar fee to go and sit and plead a case in front of the ZBA if they're just going to say no regardless? He, he felt as though, you know, taking that fee perhaps wasn't, um, you know, an appropriate thing to be doing if historically, you know, for the last year and a half, they've been saying no to all of those fence height requests.
Okay, so, a couple of things there. Thing one, um, Zabels didn't attend the meeting.
I know they didn't, yeah.
Which was one of the reasons why the zoning board, you know, they had no one to question anything. There was a lot of atypical things that they were asking questions about, no one had answers for, and they're like, you know, historically, we don't grant these anyway, right?
Right, so.
So, okay, so hold that thought though.
Okay.
To the question of the, of the fees, I think Tim, e- every single time someone has applied for a, a fence height variance, Tim tells them straight out, it is the, it is the tendency of the zoning board to not grant these. So, if someone doesn't want to pay the hundred dollar fi- uh, fee to file for that variance, knowing full well at the outset that their chances of getting it are pretty slim, then that's on them to not pay that fee, right? They don't have to go to the ZBA. They don't have to apply for that variance. But if you want to do something that is contrary to the written dictate of the, of the code, that's the process. It is what it is. You don't, you don't pay if you, if you win and don't pay if you lose. I mean, that's, that's ridiculous, right?
Right, so Tim did tell them that. So I, I did, I spoke with Ed and he, so when I, when I spoke with Ed, he recalled that, yes, Tim did mention that. And Tim told me also that he mentioned it and he mentions that to everyone. However, when I spoke with Betty, she said that neither one of them remembered that in the conversation, so.
I mean, it is what it is, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so the reason that that is on my work session, since we're talking about it, is that there has been an inordinately large number of requests for fence height variances. And I think it's been almost three months in a row now where the ZBA has said, you know, I think because these things just keep coming, I think the village board needs to, you know, have a discussion about if six foot is appropriate. Now, just a little history, as a former ZBA member, six foot fences may, are the limit for woodboard fences around the perimeter of your yard. And have historically been denied any excess height because generally speaking, and it hasn't necessarily been the case this year, but in broad general terms, if you look at the, the record of all of these variance requests, they tend to be spike fences. It's a neighbor on neighbor dispute. I don't wanna see their whatever. I don't like the, you know, the cut of their jib, whatever it might be the case, and I wanna make that thing eight feet tall. And the irony of that being, of course, that most people are not more than six feet tall. I mean, I'm six foot two. So my head is, you know, there's the top of that fence, right? So like, if I don't wanna see over it, I don't have to stand on my tiptoes to see over it. So like, if I don't want to see over it, I don't have to stand on my tiptoes to see over it. Now, this year, in particular, there has been an increasingly large number of people complaining about deer, specifically deer, jumping their fences. And so in the case of the Zabels, they also had a very heavily treed rear lot line. If you look it on Google, it's like it's just a chunk of trees. It's amazing. But they had to have those removed this year, or a large percentage of them. And now that tree line is, you know, significantly less dense, and they were looking to put in this fence. Now, according to the paperwork they had submitted, their neighbor's yard is about a foot higher than their own yard, which is why they thought, well, they'll put in a seven-foot fence because then at least it's six feet relative to the neighbor's yard. But then they also make the claim that they want to go to seven feet so that the deer can't jump over it. But, you know, Bill Tine made sort of a glib comment that if the deer can jump over a six-foot fence, and they're doing it from their neighbor's yard, you build a seven-foot fence, you, you still have a six-foot fence, they can still jump it. So really, they must be trying to keep the deer inside their yard rather than out. Right? So, you know, so the, the discussion then for the village board is not about the Zabels' property or anyone else in particular so much as whether or not we feel that six foot as a standard fence height in the Village of Williamsville is reasonable. And if it's not,
I get that.
Then what is reasonable? Because here's the thing, though. Whatever number you pick, doesn't matter. People are still going to be paying that $100 fee to make it taller. And the zoning board is still gonna hold the line on whatever height you set. Because fences will only just keep going up and up and up and up and up. So, you know, I, I don't have a, I have no recommendation on this whatsoever. I had literally have no idea what, what we would consider rational. But historically, it's been six foot. Historically, that has worked for everyone unless you have some neighbor-on-neighbor dispute. And frankly, I think the idea of trying to keep deer out of your yard, while it might be a, you know, a health issue from a deer tick point of view, the deer are gonna find their way through. This is their property first. And all you're doing is putting, is displacing the problem in your yard into your neighbor's yard. You know, which ironically, it's probably there already, there already. So, you know, I don't know that it's necessarily going to fix that one specific thing, and I'm not sure whether that one specific thing is worth changing the character of the entire village residential neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not here to debate that under correspondence. I'm just bringing it up, and it happened to tie in with what you had put under your work session agenda.
Yeah, right. Well, so that was, that was gonna be my work session.
Yeah, so I, I will just say though, you know, historically, six foot has worked. Historically, that's always what I've used in 16 years that I've lived in the village. And I think to put, to allow for higher fences, I, I think could really tend to box in a lot of the, and most of the village lots, I'm gonna venture out and say, aren't that big. So it would really, you know, if I picture like a seven-foot fence or, you know, an eight-foot, I mean, I think that that could be really have an ill effect, and I don't know as though I would want to support that.
I agree.
I agree. Six feet is plenty.
Okay.
There you go, there's four.
All right. So, so I think that's where we are with that issue. And Matt, maybe you can, you know, just relay that over then to ZBA that, you know, at this time, this board is interested in staying with six feet.
Yep. You got it.
Good, thank you. All right, that's all I have for correspondence. If there's no one else, we'll move into a grant update. Keaton?
Thanks, Bernie. So a few things on grants. Deb, Judy and I met with also Ben and Bernie and Anthony, our grant writers. A couple of weeks ago, we're gonna have a meeting set up for early February, just to kind of get some more updates. WQIP still is not open yet. That is the Water Quality Improvement Program Grant. We were looking at possibly getting some funding to do some garage renovations at the DPW. However, the timeline just really isn't, really isn't lining up. We would have needed things together on a very quick timeline. Due to everything being shifted because of COVID, the opening for grants is pretty slim from open to close. So we're gonna look, look through 2020 for other, I'm sorry, 2021 for other opportunities, hopefully. Leaving that as on the agenda for Ben and his garage over there. We told Bernie that one of our, our two priorities would be, as far as related to parks, would be getting a stage or some sort of a fixed structure for events at Island Park, and then maybe a pavilion at South Lawn. So he has our parks POP 2025 document. So they're well aware of our needs and everything, and they're gonna look at possible opportunities there. Later on in the agenda, you'll see that Matt prepared an RFP for the updates, the comprehensive plan and the zoning code. Judy and I spoke about possible Zen opportunities related to that, since it will be quite costly, we believe. We're gonna talk with Bernie about opportunities there. That ends everything with the call that we had with Bernie. The LWRP, we, we met last, we had a great meeting. It was actually Eileen's first meeting with the LWRP Committee. And so, so far, we have Sections 1, 2, and 3 of five Sections complete. And actually, I believe today, just before the meeting, Wendy Silvati sent over to the Department of State Sections 2 and 3 for the Department of State's review. And we're currently working on Section 4, which is basically where we get into more of the nuts and bolts, our actual physical projects that we'd like to build into the plan. Let's see. Our next meeting will probably be third to fourth week in February. We haven't scheduled one yet. I'm just kind of waiting on a couple more people to, to reply. So yeah, things with LWRP are moving along now after a little bit of a delay. It was good to get back, back into work with everyone on that. That's all I have on that front. Does anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, I just want to add about the SOR consolidation with the town. So Judy and Chip, we need to get together an updated memo of understanding with the Town of Amherst. Bernie had mentioned that because the other one, I believe, is quite old that we have.
2013.
Okay, so is that?
Yeah, and we were working on an updated one a couple, you know, you know, the couple of years, last year or two years ago. I can't remember now, but, but it just never really developed, especially once COVID hit. And I think the town developed some other priorities. So, but yeah, we can, we can do that. But it's been, nothing's really happened on that for, for a while now.
Right. It's just, it's kind of one of those pieces that he recommended us having in place.
Yeah.
You know, getting any type of grants and such.
Yep.
And then?
As, as we, we were working on that when things sort of stalled before, so we can pick to, pick that back up.
Okay, that would be great. And then we can get that signed off and just have it in our file. Okay. All right, is that it, Keaton?
Yeah, I believe that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so right into reports. Chip, can you give us an update on what you found on our responsibility is as a village for that conservation easement at 144?
Yeah, it's not, it's not much. We have, it's really permissive more than mandatory. Other than, I mean, we, we are obligated to enforce it in the sense of somebody were to go try to build on it.
Right.
Would have to use whatever resources and options are available to prevent that. But we have the right under the easement to go onto the property at least annually to inspect it. But we don't have to, we're not obligated to do that.
Okay.
That's about it.
So it's pretty.
Still, the only other thing I'd say is we're still waiting, I'm still waiting to get from, from the mangled attorney, the grantor's attorney, the survey that I believe, I was, believe was prepared in connection with the real estate transfer. But I still don't have a copy of the actual survey that shows, that depicts the conservation easement area. We have a sketch, but we don't have an actual survey.
Okay.
We do have a legal description, so it's not like it's, I'm not suggesting the document is deficient. I mean, we, we do have a legal description that describes it and meets and bounds. It's just if the survey exists, we should have a copy of it, and I would like to get a copy of it. And I believe they are going to give it to us. It's just I haven't received it yet.
Okay.
And just a refresher, the, the conservation easement is that sort of weird L-shaped piece.
It's an L shape.
The triangular parcel, right?
Yep, yep. It's an L shape. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so with regards to the policing action, what about like tree removal?
We, we don't, no, we don't have any sort of affirmative maintenance obligations to go in there and take trees. That, it's, it's their property. It's the property owner's property.
Yeah, no, from a conservation point of view, are, like, if they, if, if they went in and clear, you know, clear cut.
Oh, if they clear cut, I think there is a prohibition on clear cutting in there, but that I didn't. If I have here somewhere on my ridiculously messy desk right now. The right to enter if we have reason to believe necessary to enforce the terms. Covenants, no construction or placing of buildings, sewage disposal systems, wells, drainage system, underground tanks, blah, 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 blah. No dumping, storing, or placing of soil or other substances, no mining or drilling, no use of fertilizers, poisons, pesticides, herbicides, or biocides, no hunting or trapping, and no introduction of non-native plants or animals. Should be no alteration of water courses. No operation of motorized vehicles, basically. No removal or disturbance of the iron pins. Yeah, so it doesn't prohibit the removing of vegetation.
I'm just thinking that the most likely thing that's gonna happen, you know, in the relative near future is that a lot of those swamp ash are probably gonna have to get cleared out of there.
Yeah, and that, right. And that, there would be no prohibition on that.
Right. And if the, and the point is, is that for us to know that, because if the neighbor is like, oh my God, they're in there cutting those trees down.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're allowed to do it.
Yep.
Yeah. No, that's a, that's a good point, Matt. Thank you for bringing that up. Because I'm sure we will be getting calls if those trees start coming down.
Yep, that'll be the first one.
The first one. Okay, so Chip, is it safe to say I can just take this off then? I think we're all good.
Yeah, it's done.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, so the meeting house transfer of ownership, I've been working with Judy in getting a couple pieces together to kind of see where, where this can possibly go. The first thing that I did, I, I did get a quote from GAR Associates. GAR Associates is a real estate appraiser that's actually located here right in the village. And I did get a quote for them for the estimate for $990. So since it's not over $1,000, we're not required to go out and get three bids. So I would like to keep business local if, if possible, which is why I approached GAR. So does anybody have any issues if the time comes when we are deciding to do the appraisal to go with GAR Associates?
I don't.
No?
No.
Okay. Okay, I have a copy of it. If anybody wants a copy of it, I'm happy to make it for you and put one in your mailbox. So, so that's the first piece. The other thing that Judy was able to uncover, a couple of things. I guess the first one is there is an agreement with the Williamsville Historical Society and the Village of Williamsville that talks about if and when the village would decide to sell the property, they would need to give written notice, a year's notice to the Williamsville Historical Society. However, Chip, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this, but it hasn't been renewed since 1996 with the village.
I haven't, I haven't seen any, I have not reviewed or seen any of the documentation related to the meeting house as of yet.
Yeah, I don't think, I think I did not send it to you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I have Judy, one of us will get it over to you. But I guess the, the point that I'm, I'm making here, and I, I'd like you to drill down maybe and look at, is that according to this agreement with the Village and Historical Society, we're supposed to be renewing this contract per se on a yearly basis. And my question then would be, if we haven't renewed it since 1996, does it still mean that we have to get a year's written notice to the Historical Society? So that, that I guess is a question we need to get the answer to.
Yeah, I'll have to take a look at it. I mean, I suppose it's possible that, I mean, generally speaking, if there's no agreement in effect, but if we've been, if both sides have essentially been abiding by that for a number of years, I suppose it's possible that, that. Well, I'll, I really need to, I don't want to speculate on any, you know, I might do without actually reviewing the documents.
Okay. The other, the other item that Judy also was able to uncover was the preservation covenant with the New York State Historic Preservation Group and the Village of Williamsville. So that's another document. I mean, I haven't really been able to get through all of it, but we, we should get that over to you as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I need to, right, I can't really tell you what you can and cannot do without reviewing the documents.
Right. I'm just, I'm just bringing them up as just pieces that I'm, you know, we're uncovering and we'll get out to everyone. Judy, was there anything else that you?
I'm still looking for information on the fact that it is listed on the National Historic Registry because I think that's what the covenants for inside are kind of ruled under.
If it's national, it must be state also.
Yes. It is.
Yeah, but that's not gonna, that, that shouldn't alter the analysis one way or the other. But I, the, I, I agree that it's my understanding of the property is registered, eligible for the registers. And that may include, the interior very likely includes the interior, very possibly includes the interior. But the, the mere listing on those registries is not what's gonna impose a restriction. It's whatever the preservation covenant says.
The right, okay, the preservation covenant that I found, which I just forwarded to you so you can read it, you're me sure, is from when we received the, the SHPO grant on the steeple and the repointing of the exterior of the building. But I know there's something somewhere that restricts inside because when we wanted to get rid of the pews, we were told we could not.
But that should be reflected in a, in a covenant. It should not, like I said, I, and I don't, I, I really need to review the material. But sitting here right now, I can't think of the mere fact that it's on the register itself wouldn't mean we couldn't remove pews. It would have to be reflected in something like a destruction or a covenant.
We would have had to have taken money for something.
Absolutely. That's, that's how the, that's how those get imposed, is they give us money with strings attached. Is they give us money with strings attached, and one of those strings is to file and record one or more preservation covenants. And those define what we can and cannot do, very similar to the, you know, really similar in concept to the conservation easement that we were just talking about. It's the same idea. It's just something that gets recorded against the property, so it's there in perpetuity, and everybody's on notice, whoever owns that property, that this is what you can do, this is what you can't do.
So, so Judy, could you send over the Williamsville Historical Society document too to Chip?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she just.
Um, so I just, Chip, I just want to go over, and I'll send this over to you, but a couple of the things that are going to be needed by GAR Associates for the appraisal would be the legal survey, the site plan, any major capital improvements in the past ten years, the historic designation information, which we're working on, and those are the four big pieces. So I guess Judy, do we have like a legal survey or a site plan?
I'll have to check with Tim. I would think so, but I don't know.
Well, I mean, we should definitely have a legal description of the property. I mean, we've got our deed and the title and whatever else. I mean, we should certainly have that somewhere. Um, I don't have any of these things, but the village should have those. Um, whether there's a site plan or not, who knows? Um, we might, um, if not, we, we might have to have one done.
Deb, did you mention title?
Well, title's part of it. I, I'm guessing with that legal survey, they would need.
I, 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 I'm sure the village has the title, abstracted title somewhere. I, I shouldn't, I, I personally shouldn't say I'm sure, but I'm ninety-five percent sure that. The only reason I equivocate at all is because we did have an issue with, but this was different. When, when did we acquire the meeting house? When did the village acquire?
Nineteen seventy-six.
Yeah, so I mean, that's not like ancient history. So we definitely should have an abstract of title. The, the, the issue we had when we were applying for grants several years ago for improvements over in the South Long area, where we didn't have, the, 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 the real estate history of how the village came to own what is now South Long Park is extremely murky, and we actually, there was no abstract of title. It was, we had to, that, that was quite a process. But that's neither here nor there, because I, I would be very surprised if that, if we do not have an abstract of title kicking around village hall somewhere. Meeting house.
Okay, and I, I guess the only other thing that was a little wonky with that whole parking lot was some type of easements for one of the property owners on Swan Place.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard that reference. I've never seen, I don't know if it's ever been retused to writing, or if anybody's got a, yeah, I, I certainly have heard that mentioned before, that there's kind of this parking arrangement, but.
When I looked into it, the attorneys that have the, the house in the front have a parking easement along the driveway there. But the garage in the back does not have an easement, because we would have had to put an easement on an easement, and you can't do that. That's what I recall the last time we looked into that.
Are you talking about that carport, Judy?
Yes, yeah, that now they have a big pod in front of, which is clearly on meeting house property.
Okay, now why is that there? Can we send him over? That, that can't be.
Well, I think the gentleman who owns the house is trying to sell and moving out. I believe that's his pod.
Well, I understand that might not be on our property. It can't be on village property, though. We're not, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think, um, I think Tim needs to go over there tomorrow and notify him that that needs to be removed. Okay. I, I just, that's. So that's all I have. I just want to keep everyone up to date with where everything's at. So I have on the meeting house. Does anyone have any questions? Um, anything with the Los Robles water and the easement on Natali's property? Is that something we want to pursue, or?
Well, we, we need an easement for that.
Right, I mean, is that something that this board is interested in pursuing?
I think we should, we absolutely should be.
Yeah, I do too.
There's a stormwater line on Natali's property. We have to have access to that.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so how do we go about getting this going?
Well, either Tim or Ben, or Tim and Ben should pursue it collectively.
Well, I mean, basically what you need to do is you need, you need the, um, the utility drawing that Natali has for the stormwater. And someone needs to map out the easement around the water line, the sewer line that we want access to. So whether that's a ten-foot easement or a twenty-foot easement, or, and, and the way it, you know, zigs and zags across the property and connects up from California to the west property line is, is, you know, all based on the layout of the site and how the pipe is laid out. So, um, I think all of that's in place. They should be able to get an as-built survey of that. And then it's about Chip writing a legal description and all in a day.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think the, the thing to request from, from Natali slash culbacks would be an as-built survey of the storm line in question. Uh, and, you know, and then some form of decision on whoever's part as to what width we need access.
And Ben, do you have anything to add to that?
Oh, Tim has the drawings. We have not, or I'm not really involved, to my knowledge, asked for any of as-built drawings. So that's, that's in the building department and wherever else has to go after that.
Okay, so Ben, I guess the only question for you then is, how much room does DPW need to gain access to that pipe if, if need be?
Twenty feet either side, oh well, yeah.
Well, ten feet either side, right?
I mean, ideally more.
You're not national grid here, you know?
I'm not natural fuel either. Um, yeah, twenty feet should be fine, so ten feet either side.
Ten feet either side, okay.
Brand new, we shouldn't have to touch it in a very long time. It is deep.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, uh, check with Tim and see where that is at, and have him touch base with Natali if need be to get what he needs. And Chip will get it over to you, and we'll get, get it written up, I guess.
Sounds good.
Um, Keaton, do you want to put up the South Cayuga Road crosswalk schematic?
Sure, no problem.
Just so everybody can take a look at it. I, I've been promising it for a while now, so I thought visuals are always good. Yeah, that picture right there. You want to just go back one? Yep, right there. So, so there's South Cayuga Road. The crosswalk is kind of going diagonally to the corner and then across Milton. That's essentially what it will look like. Um, Matt, I believe they determined that there was no interference for the steps at the historic schoolhouse. So is that something you feel strongly still about taking that to HPC?
No, I mean, we're working on our property. So it looks like we're ma, we are putting in essentially two more steps at the base of the existing stair. So the sidewalk, wow. Seven and a half percent. Are we putting in railings too?
No.
No.
Don't need them. It's under eight, eight, eight point three.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
So, so who does this need to go to? It needs to go to Traffic and Safety now that we have it. I, I want to make sure I get the document to the appropriate committee for their review, so I need to know who it needs to go to.
Traffic and Safety, that's pretty much it.
Okay, so you're liaison to Traffic and Safety, right?
Nope.
No, I am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Eileen, if we, um, Keaton, I've had trouble opening this. So Keaton, could you send this over to Eileen so she could share it with Traffic and Safety, please?
No problem.
Thank you.
Are the big black blobs there high intensity beacons?
Yep.
Okay.
Wow.
Any questions on this before we move on?
Um, I'm just curious, uh, were the people who own the houses, like the old schoolhouse, they were notified of this, I'm guessing? Or are we just doing without letting them know? I'm just curious.
They have not yet been notified.
But they, they should be. It was in a, an agreement we made for, uh, you know, the, uh, the homeowner on, on Mill there who was upset with the other mid-block crossing.
Right.
We're not, we're not obliged, yeah, we're not obliged to notify them, but, you know, it's a courtesy.
I think that's a good idea. I think it's a common courtesy to do that, you know, just to tell them that we're improving their safety as well, so, you know what I mean? Go for it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we did agree to that.
Good.
Okay, so we'd need to get a form letter out then on that, and it would need to go to two properties. It would need to go to the schoolhouse property, which I believe, I, I don't know if that's vacant. Um, I guess it doesn't matter, but, um, we'll need to get one to there, and then the, uh, house on the corner as well. Do we have a form letter, or do we need to create one from scratch?
I don't believe we have one. I've not given one out before.
Okay, so I think it's just going to be a very basic letter, right? Um, just stating the.
It could probably be something similar to the notice letters that Tim sends out for, you know, private projects and stuff.
Okay, well, that's a good point, Matt. So maybe I'll reach out to Tim and see if he can maybe pull something together for that.
You could probably stick a copy of this plan on, with it too. If you're going to send something, just print the one page out.
Mm-hmm. I would, yeah, definitely.
Okay. With one page, yeah. Okay, that's doable.
Okay.
Okay, um, that's all I have. So, um, Basil, you want to talk about the North Long Street stormwater update?
I had a chat with Ben about this today, um, that essentially we've done whatever we need to do. Yes, we, we did put in a couple hundred feet of drain tile in between the house that the lady was complaining and the house just south of there. Uh, and the house south of it is the one that probably gave an easement back in the forties to do this kind of stuff. And anyway, um, Ben, Ben's guys checked, checked the drain tile. It's, it's working. Uh, so it's doing what it should do. So if she still has problems, if there's some funk running a lot, uh, welcome to North Long. Mine, mine was coming constantly in, in wet weather. We're at the low point in the street, and, uh, that's the way it is. We don't really need to do anything else with, with that property. And we don't have any more responsibility either, so. And, and I think Ben tried to tell her that. She, she hung up on him, but, but essentially that's the story. And that's all I.
So do we, Ben, as far as our responsibility on our end, and, and Judy, I know you were looking at some easements or trying to see if there were any, what is our responsibility now?
Well, if, if, if we did the drain tile about ten, twelve years ago, and it's still working, then we have no additional responsibility. We're, we're doing what we probably agreed to do back after World War Two.
Yeah, I agree to that. There's nothing that needs to be done right now.
Okay.
All right, let's take a minute.
Okay, Matt, you have like two minutes. Actually, let's hold off because it's almost seven thirty. So let's all take a, like a three-minute break, and we'll get back into our village board meeting at seven thirty, and then we'll pick up where we left off.
Okay.
All right.
I love.
Matt, Matt and I are actually just taking a break from our meeting. Um, are, are we kind of going forward at the moment? Uh, assuming we, we, we might have the art festivals coming somewhere, or is it, are you thinking no? I'm sorry.
Yes, in the meeting. I think he's totally screwed it up now. Hey, Basil?
Yes.
She's right here.
Do you want me to just speak?
Hey, Lauren.
Yeah, she can just talk to you, you know?
Hello.
Hi, Lauren.
So Basil, your question about the art festival. Are we muted? No.
No, not muted.
Okay, we are not going to accept any new applications.
I think he's on the phone.
Basil.
Looking on the phone with someone.
Oh.
Unless he's leaving a voice.
Uh, maybe he can hear you.
He's talking to you now, Lauren.
Saying he's going to call me back later.
I think he must be keeping that on our voice chat.
He's laughing.
Hi, Lauren. Hello. Basil had a question for me about the art festival, but. So our current course is we are not going to accept any new applications. We are, if it goes forward, it's going to be with the artists who were accepted for twenty twenty. And we're going to reserve judgment till May first, whether, so we'll. And we're going to reserve judgment till May 1st, whether, so we'll really just a matter of whether the Department of Health allows such a thing to happen. So I'm going to be getting in contact with the 2020 artists to let them know, like, if it goes forward, we're considering you to be in and let me know if you still want to be in for 2021. And then we'll just kind of keep our fingers crossed and at May 1st, we kind of judge that to be our decision date, whether it would be, it would give us enough time to move forward with planning things and arranging things and would give the artists time to get ready. Um, but if things aren't opened up by then, then we'll cancel again. Thanks Lauren. You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Okay, well, let's start the board meeting. It's, uh, 7:30. So, uh, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Piazza. Can you hear us?
Is there a flag there?
Maybe not. All right, I'll lead it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Administrator Kindred, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Piazza? Trustee Yates? Trustee Eto'o?
Yes.
Trustee Torrey?
Here.
Attorney Greco?
Here.
DPW General Crew Chief Villanen?
Here.
Deputy Treasurer Pascoe?
Here.
Director of Community Development De Priest?
Here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, we have no proclamations this evening, so we'll move into the approval of the meeting minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on January 11th, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, no public hearings this evening, so we'll move into the suspension of rules for public participation. So I'll make a motion to open up the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if you, uh, would like to speak, we ask that you state your name and an address for the record.
Uh, am I on? Jerome Slater, uh, 26 Willbrook Drive in Williamsville?
Yes, we can hear you.
But thank you. I just wanted to-
Hold on.
Everybody needs to mute.
Yep. Jerome, you're muted.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the board members and to, uh, and to the DPW, uh, W and Ben for, um, very prompt action on the request I made on the at the, uh, Castle Creek Bridge be removed. And that was done, I think even three or four days ago, and I very much appreciate all the help. That's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Okay, great. Do we know what that is?
I believe it was feedback, um, Mr. Slater's.
Oh, okay.
Wasn't too great, but, uh, it allowed us to hear him and, and all we-
Wow, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Slater. I think that was my feedback, sir.
Thank you, Ben.
Yep, thank you, Ben, and all the guys who were part of it. Okay. Um, anyone else who would like to speak? Keaton, anyone know?
No, no one with their hands raised.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the suspension of rules for public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, reports and resolutions. I'm going to make a motion. I'll let Keaton get those up first and um, I will make a motion to approve resolutions number one, number two, and number three as they appear on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, the one, one thing I forgot to bring up under correspondence, but it's really more, um, has to do with internal business, so I'll bring it up now. Um, I did receive a letter from, um, Tony Shukler regarding, uh, the outdoor seating permits and the extension for those. And I just wanted to see if everyone would be okay if we waived the fees for outdoor seating as long as there are no violations during the initial inspection. Um, so is everyone okay for kind of extending the waiver that we've already extended due to COVID?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I, I kind of thought you all would be, so, um, so I'm happy to hear that because I, I think it's whatever little bit, you know, of monetary it is to a business, I think it's helpful nonetheless, so, um, so that's good. Um, and that'll just be anybody who's looking for like brand new seating, right? If they don't have an outdoor seating permit to begin with, but they're looking for new seating. Uh, I think that's something that we are gonna need to collect a fee for because it's brand new. It needs to go through planning board approval, correct?
Not, not currently. We removed it. That was one of the things that we, we did away with with the executive order was back when this all started, was that they wouldn't have to go through planning.
Well, as long as that executive order stays in place, I don't, that, that could change, you know, any day, so.
But wasn't that extended through, no, it's your executive order and wasn't that extended through March?
Yeah, through March, but I'm, I'm talking after March. This is for after March.
Oh, well then, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, waiving, but after March waiving any, you know, fees for the, um, you know, for the outdoor-
For like for year number two, you mean?
For, right, because so currently your new, the new permit runs from April 1st, 2021 through November 28th, 2021. That's when the new permit would run. So I'm looking at removing the outdoor seating permit renewal fee for that timeframe. If, if we're okay with that, we, we're gonna get, Tony's gonna go ahead and get these letters out to the folks who already have outdoor seating permits. However, anyone who doesn't have an outdoor seating permit and is looking to acquire one for new seating, they would be, you know, they would need to pay that fee and have, you know, the initial inspections and to make sure that they're safely set up and so forth.
Yes, that makes sense.
So, yes, okay. All right, so I will get this, uh, back to him then and we'll get these sent out to everyone. And that's all I have. So, next on the agenda is Deputy Mayor Piazza for your reports.
Well, I have no report except that Bill's lost. No resolution, so I'm gonna pass it right by me.
Okay. Uh, next then for her reports is Trustee Torrey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I wanted to discuss our Community Cats webpage during our work session, but I think we can show it, um, because it is complete. If Keaton could bring it up just briefly. Oh, very cool. I love this.
Okay, so there's a, a new tab and, um, once someone is at the homepage, um, government, departments, committees, and then resources. And under resources, you'll find communitycats/tnvr. And there you'll find um, the whole description of what community cats are and what TVNR is. And you'll find our code and then you'll find, yep, you'll also find all those helpful links.
Cool.
Which, which are necessary, uh, especially because they're all local, like Feral Cat Focus and Operation Pets. They all assist with, uh, community cats in our area and they're a blessing to have, so, um, people who have issues could just go on this link and, um, they're, they're taken care of, basically. Everything's there for them.
Really great job, Eileen and Keaton on that, putting that together. I think it looks great.
Very good.
So that's all I have.
That's a lot, though. That's a, that's a really positive thing, you know?
I enjoy doing it.
It was a couple years in the making, so thanks, Ellen.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Thank you, Keith, for your help.
It was a couple years in the making. All right, um, then next for his reports and resolutions is Trustee Eto'o.
Uh, I don't really think I have any reports, uh, so a couple of resolutions. Whereas the next village election will be held on June 15th, 2021, and whereas the offices will be filled and the terms thereof are as follows. Two trustee terms for four-year terms, sorry, two trustees for terms of four years. Now therefore be it resolved that the administrators hereby authorized to publish a legal notice designated the, uh, date of the election, the offices to be filled and the terms thereof in the February 3rd, 2021, am her speed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And may the odds be ever in your favor. Um, whereas the next village election is to be held on Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, and whereas the hours of voting shall be 12 noon until 9:00 PM, now therefore be it resolved that said village has one election district which includes the entire area of the municipal boundaries of the village Williamsville. Be it further resolved, uh, which the sole following place of holding such election shall be at Williamsville Village Hall, 5565 Main Street, Williamsville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Eto'o. And last for his reports and resolutions is Trustee Yates.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, don't really have any, uh, updates from our, since our last meeting on committees, so don't really have anything there. Um, then I have just the one resolution to change the name. Um, the, the only correction we need to make on this is it should be Conversations Committee instead of just Conversation. Not that that's a big Gamestopper, but that's the only correction I have to make to that resolution, so. Uh, resolve that the village board approves the name change for the committee formerly known as the Diversity Committee to the Culture Conversations Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's still the same people, right?
Yeah, same people, yep. The committee just felt that it needed a different name to make it more welcoming and more of a conversation as opposed to, you know, something so strict and guided, I guess.
Michelle is chair, chairperson for that one?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah.
Al, I had, can I ask you a question, Al?
Uh?
I like, do, do you need to be a village resident to be a part of this committee?
No, we're allowed to, uh, have committee members outside the village, um, because it's not a, um, you know, a board that decides a, a cost to something. So on our committees, like even on some of our tree boards in Youth and Rec, we've allowed um, uh, uh, village members outside of it, because we do have some.
No, I think it's great. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, no. So if you know somebody who's interested, we certainly welcome anybody, welcome all and all the ideas we can get, so. All right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Yates. Uh, we'll get right into staff reports. Uh, Administrator Kindred?
Nothing from me.
Attorney Greco?
Nothing this evening.
Crew Chief Villanen?
Uh, nothing this evening, Mayor.
Deputy Treasurer Pascoe?
Nothing, Mayor.
Community Development Director De Priest?
I have nothing else to report.
Okay, um, we are going into executive session tonight to, um, to talk about the extension of the union contract. So, um, do I, I'll make a motion to go into executive session?
Go off agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go off agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so I'll make a motion now to go into executive session to discuss the extension of the union contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Keaton, I think you have, uh, the five board members and Judy and Chip.
Correct, um, that's all you need, right?
Um, yeah.
Ben's not part of this, right?
Right, well.
Or, or Ben?
I'm okay with Ben. I mean, can Ben, yeah, I mean, I think.
Yep, it's okay for Ben to be in, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I will add Ben and open the room.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, funny meeting.
We're back.
Amazing, isn't it? Magic.
Okay, so um, I will make a motion to um, close the executive session, which we Yeah, return to regular. Return to the regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board meeting adjourned and we'll head back into work session and we'll pick up with trustee E two.
Okay, um, so hitting number three first, I think we all agree that we're going to stick with six feet, so we can
Yes.
Just be struck and move on. Uh, the request for proposal for update to the comprehensive plan and zoning code. Keaton, can you pull that up?
Sure, just one second.
Yeah, this is lengthy and and it was all, in all the languages, primarily based on previous examples of RFPs and RFQs that the village has released for one thing or another. I I also found online, uh, you know, a guideline for, um, you know, effective RFPs and things that should be included in them. So um, I'll just hit those things. But the the basic premise here is this is a very dense RFP. It's kind of ambitious and it's intended to be so to um, to try and, you know, catch the attention of some of the 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 big swingers, but also to uh, make it, you know, apparent to potential planning consultants out there that we're serious to do this. And not just, you know, piecemeal, but you know, maybe uh, either comprehensively all four items or or over a period of time or whatever we can afford to do. And I appreciate Keaton and Judy chasing down the idea of grants and stuff for this thing, but in advance of um budget time, um, I thought it best to try and get this on the street as soon as possible so that we can start to see, you know, reality wise, like where we're going to fall on this, because I literally have absolutely no idea. But um, uh, what we're asking for is a uh, comprehensive plan update, take what we have, review it, you know, strike those things that have been completed, uh, you know, target those things that need to be you know, updated and, you know, brought to the to the top of the list as things that need to be done and then, you know, create new things that maybe, you know, the future of the village needs to be looking into. We started that process, you know, a year and a half ago in-house. The the writing aspect of it, the the documentation part of taking the feedback and putting into the text, it's just an absolutely monumental task that just can't be done on the moonlight. And and quite frankly, I think it's it's too important to try and do this in-house. Second, associated with that is what I talked about, the idea of of taking a look at the N M U and the R three M districts. And, you know, having a planning consultant critique them, determine if there are areas that need to be, you know, massaged, if any, if there's, you know, some scaling that needs to be done to be, you know, more reasonable or appropriate, depending on how the community feels about that. And to Chip's recommendation, the idea of going through the comp plan scenario first and getting all that community feedback and then using that to plug right into the the analysis of these existing districts, uh, seems like the right thing to do so that we don't end up doing one in reverse and then having to revisit it. Third, and I would I would put this attached to the RFP would be to review and recommend revisions to the proposed urban space zoning district that I wrote up. I don't see this being a huge ticket item, but it's really sort of, you know, more of a these planning consultants are going to have more experience with this than I ever will. And if they look at it and say, you know, oh, you could do this, you could do that, especially since we're proposing the idea of it being a potential overlay for private ownership as well. The idea of getting them some getting some feedback from that uh, seemed to make a lot of sense. And then lastly, number four, and this was kind of there is
There is some
Whoa, whoa. There is some discussion in the comp plan about consolidation of or updates to um, single and single. And I don't see this being um, like a big, you know, new code, like the N M U or anything like that. It's really just sort of the fact that one of the oldest parts of our zoning code is our residential district codes, and they're kind of goofy. Uh, the R one, which everything is based off of, you know, R two, that's everything that's in R one plus more. R one is the smallest zone in the in the in the village, and it was created specifically for the subdivision that is um, around Williamsville South. So it's it's odd that that's the basis of our entire code. The the really crazy thing is that if you actually drive around the neighborhoods, do you see an appreciable difference between Hirschfield and Monroe or Kayauga and, you know, something else? The the truth is, is that the subtleties in these codes is so slight that I think we could probably get away with a condensing and literally just create residential, just like be done with it. So I'm not looking to like wholesale change stuff and rewrite stuff. I'm really looking for the planning consultant to kind of review what we have and say, you know what, we can just kind of nasenex this and clean this up and and be done with it. So to that end, then one of the effective things that was recommended was to include dollar values. So keep, can you scroll down? It gives the idea to the consultant, not so much that if you if you propose, keep going. If you propose at this dollar value, you're guaranteed to get the job. It's there, stop right there. It's it's more of an idea of what are we willing to budget for these efforts? And it gives them the idea that like, okay, we're working on a shoestring or we've got, you know, nothing but money here or whatever, but it also gives them the opportunity to try and be a little bit creative in how best to be effective and get the job done in a in a reasonably short period of time. I had asked Chip only because I thought, you know, if anybody, he might have seen the price tags associated with these types of things and other disciplines and other municipalities and things. And I had thrown out numbers as an idea. And I thought that, you know, maybe the comp plan update was like seventy five thousand dollars. Wendy Sobadi's L W R P for directing Harrison is forty four thousand, about five hundred and fifty man-hours. And uh, I think a big chunk of it, another twenty grand or something, was paid for by a grant and by in-kind services on our part and stuff. So you know, seventy five doesn't seem too big when you consider that she's that the L W R P is maybe about sixty, right? And then the other ones I saw being less, you know, the the review of the existing district might be about ten thousand, the review of the urban open space. You know, I don't know, three grand, four grand, something like that. And then the residential, you know, could be maybe ten grand or something, because it's three zones and whatnot. So all in, if you summed it all together, you could be looking at something in the range of like a hundred thousand dollars worth of project. And then what I asked them to do, Keaton, if you can scroll down in preparing, keep going all the way, uh, in preparing their proposal, keep going, keep going. Was to keep going, keep going. Was to prepare proposals. It's, I think it's the very next page. Now keep going. Oh, keep going. Oh, I wrote a lot. There it is. Okay, stop right there. Zoom right back. That that numbering scheme up a little bit. Was the idea is give us a fee to do everything over the course of four years. Okay, so we got a hundred thousand dollar project. We're going to leverage that over four years. This is going to give the planning consultant the idea that, hey, they're locked in for four projects over a course of a period of time. It's going to cost a little more because it's going to spread out over time, but you know, they've got they got backlog now too, right? And then similarly, sort of stripping that down, okay, we're going to do one and two, we're going to do the comp plan and the N M U R three M project at the same time in one year, and then everything else is going to follow after that. And and then three, and then all of them, give us your best price. We want to bang this out full full speed ahead, hundred percent of all everything here. What's your best price to get it all done in a year? And we'll see where they fall.
What what's the potential?
What do you mean?
Um, hundred hundred grand?
That's, I mean
Essentially, or
Based on numbers that I made up off the top of my head, yes.
Okay. Well, okay, but that's over four years. It's not like
Could be.
Yeah.
Right.
That can be make it easier to swallow.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. Right. I mean, and and, you know, I don't know where we're going to fall, you know, budget-wise here and everything, but you know, a hundred thousand dollars might be difficult to jam into a um, a one fiscal year budget. But if we got a fifty thousand dollar grant, you know, maybe it's not a big hit. Uh, or we do it over two years or whatever might be the case. But I wanted to see, because I literally don't know how planning consultants fees work, but thinking about how they would do it, it's probably just a crap ton of labor, right? It's just man-hours. A lot of writing, it's a lot of community meetings, it's a lot of reading. So, I mean, I took a stab at how many man-hours do I think it would take to accomplish this and, you know, And, you know, $75,000 buy you 750 man hours. It's a lot of time. It's like 20 weeks. Right? So, I mean, it seems unlikely that it would cost that much, but I don't know. So I'm, you know, I'm open to, if if we're comfortable with those numbers, we can publish those. If we're if we want to dial it back a little bit, we can dial it back. I I have no preconceived notion. I'm just throwing numbers.
Putting their question out is 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 and dialing back if we see that needs down the line.
Say that again?
Are we better off just ask asking for the move and then seeing what we have to settle for once we see what they say?
That was kind of what where my head was at. Yeah.
Yeah. That approach. I mean, we could, I mean, could we not even schedule like a question and answer? Like I know some RFPs that'll have like a a meeting.
So this is, this is a, it does ask for an interview process.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and that's the way we've done most of our RFPs for planning services in the past.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I just, I skipped the step of doing the request for qualifications first to get to the interview, to then get the request for proposal because it just adds time. And I was hoping that we could, you know, get this stuff done so that come the beginning of the fiscal year, we could pull the trigger and get them started on something.
Sure. I think it's great.
My support.
Mine too. You need it. We need it.
Okay. Well, so then we we like the numbers. We'll go with those numbers that I randomly pulled out of my butt and stick it on there and get it out into the world.
I think you have an idea, though.
I have an idea. I always have ideas.
Yeah, but you know what I mean. I think you have more of an idea than the rest of us do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
All right. So Keaton, I'll I'll make the last minute edits here. And then, you know, I'm not exactly sure how we post these things or to whom. There must be a process. It's done before. There there I know there's
We we've done it different ways in the past. I mean, we certainly would publish it on our website. But we have also sent them out to people whom we think might be interested. You know, the the planning consultant community is not that huge. So really, however the board wants wants to do it, but I
Is this the kind of thing we want to do on the contract reporter?
We haven't done that in the past, but
Okay. It'd be interesting to see what we get.
Yep.
Yeah, I would say use all avenues so that we can get invite as many as we can. So we have some good proposals, something to look at.
Yeah. Keaton, can you scroll down just a little bit? Keep going to the 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 dates. I put in dates.
I think they were at the beginning, weren't they?
I thought they were at the end. But I appreciate the fact that you read it and you think you know. Keep going. Yeah. So the hope was that we could get this thing posted by the end of this week. And that we would give them essentially a month to ask questions with the idea that the RFP would be due the first Friday of of March. And then based on interview schedules and back and forth and whatnot, the hope would be that we could have everything resolved in the following two months. And this is all running concurrently with our budgeting, you know, aspect. So we would have a better idea of where we add dollar wise and whatnot by that point. And then, and it even says as such that, you know, all the start dates and fees and everything are contingent upon our fiscal year and our budgeting cycle. So so theoretically, we could hit the ground running as soon as the fiscal year starts. All right. So I'll make those quick changes and then get them over to you and we can we can figure out how to get it out in the world.
Can we can we do like a legal notice or anything like that?
You can.
Yeah.
You mean publish it in the paper?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You know, it's just cost money. That's all.
Right. You know, to that end, you could do a you could do a press release.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. We can do it. We'll do it all.
And then I, you know, and then maybe I'm being creating more work for myself than I needed to, but to save everybody the the effort of of you know, being playing middleman, I just made myself the contact person. So I may live to regret that, but
Fine with us, I'm sure.
But and I rather than do the old school, the the last RFP we had requested CD-ROMs and multiple copies and everything. I said, just send just send us an email and call it a day.
Yeah.
Okay. So then going back to the only other thing that was on my agenda was number two. Oh, yeah. So the assessment and sale of the Morpat right-of-way property, just keeping this in the fore. So we were gonna, we were talking about getting assessed property value. Or figuring out what reasonable, you know, sale of that property would be. I did reach out to Howard. Howard is very interested in in discussing that as well. The interesting thing about what Ben was saying about trying to just make the line a nice straight line is that the lion's share, not the entire depth, but the vast majority of the depth of the parking stalls that are on the mill terrace at the bend in Spring Street would be encompassed by running that line due north to the to the 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 turn at Spring Street. And
That's village property.
What's that?
It's village property.
All of its village property. We're talking about the right-of-way.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, so basically, we would, we would be essentially moving the property line of the existing village property on the terrace like nine and a half feet further west into the village-owned property that is the Spring Street right-of-way. But the difference is that the the maintenance of the terrace within the confines of the property is on the cadences. Whereas the maintenance of the parking stalls is on the village. If the property line encompassed the vast majority of the parking stalls, now the cadences are responsible for the snow plowing of those parking stalls. They don't have to call Ben and harass DPW to get out there and clean those out for them. So he was very excited about the idea of having more, you know, contractual control over those parking stalls.
Okay.
So I guess I can, like, why? What? So like any time I've ever been to Sweet Jenny's, it appears as though those parking stalls you're referring to are always for Sweet Jenny's customers. So so why would we as the village be responsible when that was initially written to maintain those if it's really just for the benefit of Sweet Jenny's customers?
I I have no answer for you there, except to say that it's a division of labor based on where the property line fell.
Okay, because it makes more sense to just turn that over to Howard, to me.
Doesn't it, though?
Yeah, it does. So, yeah, I I mean, I don't really understand that whole thing, but it just doesn't make any sense. So.
Especially since it's no longer going to be used by the farmer's market.
Yeah, right.
Well, that's been
The reason, as I recall, I haven't looked at that agreement in a while, but the reason, I believe, if I recall correctly, was because we, the village, wanted to reserve the right to hold public events down there.
And that I don't think that I don't, I don't see why this would preclude that.
Yeah, their easement is for the entire plaza space that we have to give them notification for if we want to want to use it. Not necessarily the right-of-way. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, let me, I'm going to pull up an image here so you can see what we're talking about. It's a little bit grainy. See my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so you see how the yellow line? Now, keep in mind, these satellite images and these property boundaries, they're they're squishy, but they're pretty close, right? So this yellow line is the is the boundary of the Spring Street right-of-way. And you see how all the parking stalls are within the Spring Street right-of-way?
Yes.
That was not unintentional.
Right, right. Now, what we're proposing to do with share and Morpat is essentially move that yellow line to the left by about 10 feet.
To the face of the building there, Matt, his law office. If you take it right to the face of his building, the the white building, his law office, yeah, right there. That's pretty much it.
Now, well, yeah, but the thing is, is that the property line doesn't jog at his law office. So second. So not yet, right. But so option one, this is what we're talking about with Morpat and share is the idea that we would narrow the property line to the towards the west by the width of the shared patio. And it would stop right there at the corner of the of Morpat and the Zen House. The option would be to continue that line due north to the intersection at Spring. And thus, less of those parking stalls, I mean, it would be like half the stall. It's like the nose of the stall. It's not the 100% of it. But more of that would be part of the terrace side than it would be the right-of-way side. And I think we could simply adjust the meets and bounds of our in our arrangement to use this however we want and everything. But I think the idea that we could give over the maintenance of those stalls and the plowing of those stalls to a private contractor owned by, you know, run by the cadences or whoever owns the mill, makes a lot more sense to me than having DPW at their beck and call.
I agree.
And it, you know, it there's a, there's a certain simplicity to a nice straight line.
Ben, has it been aggravation in the past?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And I didn't know that.
I'm sure Howard Yeah. I'm sure Howard may have mentioned it, but yeah, they've you know, we've, we've had to go back or do things for them specifically because plowing a parking lot is somewhat different than plowing a street.
Right. Yeah, and you know, and and to to DPW's defense, you know, they're driving in straight lines. You know, they're trying to clear the streets. They got a lot of miles of street to to get clear. And they they blow down Spring Street and they keep on going, right? They're not going to stop, turn around, drag back, drag the parking stalls, blah, 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 right? And so what happens is if 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 the snowstorm happens at a bad time relative to business hours, it becomes an inconvenience for the parking stalls. You know, I mean, it's, it is what it is. But if they if they have permissions to take care of that themselves and and primarily more ownership of them, then I think everybody wins. So then, to that end, where we left off was how do we establish the value of the of this sliver of land? And and get it passed over. When I talked to Howard, who is, you know, a real estate attorney, it, he immediately went to, hey, we could, you know, maybe each property owner could pay the cost of legal expenses to get the the deeds written and and the, you know, boundaries done and whatever else. And that's the cost that they pay to acquire this strip of land. And it doesn't cost the village anything, and they take care of everything on their part, and all we have to do is approve it when
Right. That's kind of what we agreed to with share before, so.
Yeah.
And he was, I guess, get back to me on, we was going to try to circle with the doctors so that the owners of his property could get together and we could all sit down. And I haven't heard back from him, so I'll I'll see if he's heard anything else from the owners of the building.
Okay.
But he is still
Yeah, I mean, I can see, I I can't believe this is going to be a huge dollar value for them. So I mean, even I could see the doctor being like, hey, if you want it, you pay for it, you know?
Right.
So so, yeah, so if you could just keep on them, Al, and we'll just keep it on the agenda for the time being, just to keep it in fore. I think that's it for me. There's nothing on the old business, so.
Did that already. Okay. All right. Trustee Tori, you're you're up.
Yeah, well, we did have an environmental meeting on last Monday and Village Earth Day came up. First of all, we need to know are we going to have an Earth Day? And it usually coincides with the farmer's market, the first day of the farmer's market, which this year will be June 5. So are we guaranteed that we're going to have a farmer's market this year? My first question. Does anybody know?
Yeah, we'll have a farmer's market.
Good. So my second question is then, can we have our Village Earth Day?
Yes. What we did last year is is we were allowed to have it operate with the farmer's market because the farmer's market was deemed essential. So the tree board did come out and do trees. I think the reason they canceled this year was there were a lot of the people that we invite out, Eileen, that were concerned of COVID at the time. I think a lot of the vendors were concerned of coming because it was still early at that point. So.
Well, well, we want to have enough time to reach out to the people who have been attending these events like Messenger Woods. And I pictured this being basically we're using most of Island Park for Village Earth Day. Because I have some new things I want to introduce. I was thinking putting like Messenger Woods with the animals in the gazebo. You know, so they have their own area and the kids can circle around them or the parents or the visitors. And what I'd like to introduce this year is a repair cafe. Does anybody know what that is?
No.
Okay, repair cafes are held worldwide. It started in Amsterdam 100 years ago. And there are a lot of communities within New York State that hold repair cafes actually on a weekly basis on weekends. And I've been listening to a lot of these Zoom meetings with NISAC and whatnot. And I would like to hold a repair cafe in the pavilion during Earth Day. And what it is, it's a community event where individuals can bring broken items such as small appliances or lamps, bikes, clothing, you know, small furniture or toys to the repair cafe where volunteers will sit down and help them fix them. It's a wonderful way to reduce waste by keeping the items items out of landfills, save money and learn basic repair skills. Now, the the tool library, have you heard of the tool library? Anybody? The tool library is is located on West North Place in Buffalo. And what they do, they rent, they actually don't rent. They actually let you borrow tools from their store if you're working on a particular project. And the tool library actually hosts these repair cafes. Now, they do them every month in Buffalo, but have actually canceled each one of them throughout through May because they're held in the local libraries. So I'd like to approach them to see if they'd like to do a repair cafe with us outside under the pavilion and basically run it with us and we can open it up to the public. Of course, COVID permitting, but it should be spaced far enough apart. And what do you think?
It's great to do.
You like it?
Yeah, I do.
Awesome. And and I, the environmental committee loves it as well. And John Nickerson had a great idea. He said, we can also involve Ed Youngs. They can have somebody on standby, you know, if somebody needs to run out and get a particular screw or a nail or we can recommend or they can say, oh, yeah, you can go to Ed Youngs and find it at this and this, you know, area. Or we can recommend, or they can say, oh, yeah, you can go to Ed Youngs and find it at this and this, you know, area or the shop, whatever. But, um, so I thought we'd do the repair cafe in addition to other, um, regular participants that we have, which is Messenger Woods. Oh, the tree giveaway, are they gonna be doing an Arbor Day this year?
Yeah, we'll do it again. We use a do it in conjunction with the farmer's market. A lot of times we will do it with Earth Day.
So we can include them for June 5th and I can work on the repair cafe. And then, um, I also attended the Amherst Recycling and Waste Committee meeting, uh, last week, the one that Pat Lucy does. And, um, Jean Neff, uh, who is a committee member of this, uh, committee, she is actually involved in a recycle education program. And normally Jean goes to schools and talks about recycling within Amherst. So I jumped on that and I asked Jean if she would like to actually host one of her, uh, her sessions at Earth Day.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, she said she would.
Excellent.
Yeah, so she's looking into, um, having a banner made and setting up a table and talking about, because there's so much going on in recycling right now, so many changes that we need to start from scratch basically and re-educate people of what they're allowed to recycle and what they're not allowed to recycle. So she's on board with that as well. Um, and then what else did we have? Oh, the environmental committee besides that. They're still working on their site plan review checklist, which is actually, you know, I still think it's a great idea. I know we can't, um, it's, what it is really, it's a policy checklist. I mean, they're listing all these things that, uh, developers and even the planning board can check off as they go through certain, uh, projects, you know, it's, it's almost like a, it's like a it's easy to follow, you know, it's just something you check off, you have to go back to looking at the code or whatnot. It's easy to follow and to basically check on things that are done properly. So they're still working on that. And then, uh, Jane had a question for Ben. Did she ask me? Ben, are you there?
I am.
Okay, Ben, I, uh, Jane wants to know what, if there's any update on the climate smart communities.
No, there hasn't been lately. We haven't met with Jason in a while.
Okay, so she wanted to know that, so I'll get back to her on that. And then the last thing I have to report on is the updates of the section house. And I received one this, from this morning from Tim. Uh, Tim and Ben went through the building this past Friday and it appears that all interior work was completed as agreed. All the debris was removed and the walls which were to be removed are removed. The front store door still needs to be installed though. Um, so according to our records, um, the gate is up, the inside is done, the door has to be put on. So now what is left basically is the outside, which is the roof fascia. Uh, replacing the damaged gutters, a replier of plywood and dormers. And of course, the electrical and gas supplies to the building when Natali gets to that with her own project. But, um, that's it.
All right, and the sewer? Or is the sewer done?
No, no, and the sewer, yeah, excuse me, and the sewer.
I don't want anyone to think that it's in any way ready to, uh, move in.
No, 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 no. But I just want to keep everybody up to date on what has been done so far because we have a timeline that they gave us. So I'm just going by their timeline, they're behind obviously for many reasons. But, uh, just to give a continued update, um, this is what it is right now.
There is a lot.
The Flynn Battalion proposal.
I'm sorry, what?
Became of the Flynn Battalion proposal for the, uh, exterior work.
Yes, it did.
You approved it.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah, there were documents to put out on the street in April.
Awesome.
So that's all I have to report on.
The interior. If I could just follow up on that, the interior demolition was removal of the drywall partitions.
Right.
There are layers upon layers in that building. And.
Really?
Drywall?
There, there's. Oh, no, other, other materials that make up walls within the building. And, and the ceilings, uh, there's a lot of work yet to be done before you can even start to understand what needs done to make it a viable building.
Yeah, my, my memory of our agreement was that they were gonna leave us broom clean bare studs.
Yep, and they did that. But the ceiling is a hard ceiling, a metal lathe and concrete that has been punctured over a number of years to do other improvements. With a ton of electric still up in there that's all disconnected and torn apart, none of that was removed. So that there's still a lot to do to get that building down to a basically blank slate.
Yeah, we're looking for a cold dark shell.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to say that the DPW has a lot of work to do to get there yet.
Why do we have to do that work?
Because they removed the original existing partitions to their, for what they were supposed to do, but there's a lot of stuff within there that due to the damage over the years has to be removed too, all the existing wiring.
Yeah, I know, I guess I, I guess I.
Ceiling.
My memory of what we agreed to as what they were gonna leave us is different than what we have right now. And it may be, it, it might be what we have written. I don't, don't, you know, don't misunderstand me, but I I, I thought we were gonna get empty bear stuff.
That's what we have.
Everywhere.
We also have a lot of ceiling. No, not everywhere, no.
In my, in my mind's eye, I was seeing Joyce everywhere, Joyce, bear, bear, bear framing was the idea.
No, the original agreement was to remove the partitions that weren't there with it, with, in the original building.
Okay.
And that's what they did, but the existing old original building has a lot of material that needs to be removed in order to make something out of this building.
Okay, but again, the, the follow-up to that would be, why does DPW have to do that? Why couldn't that be part of a tenant improvement?
I'm sure it could be.
I think it should be.
Right now, we are owners of a very, not quite blank slate.
I'm losing you, Ben.
Yeah, no, I don't know what, um, I don't know where you guys want to go with this building and what responsibility we have now that, um, we're owners.
Is, is it a major effort to just remove the, whatever's in the, the ceilings?
Yes.
Ah. Okay.
Now, you got broken windows. You got. It's very difficult for me to describe without, without people looking at it. It's just a very old thing that's got a lot of layers on it. They took out what we asked to take out. And basically exposed other stuff that, yeah, probably we should have asked to have removed, but didn't know at the time that it would need to be removed.
They did what they said they were gonna do, um, contractually. Is this something that your, your guys would be able to go after or would prefer not to do it that way?
Yeah, we could, but I, I guess I'm asking you, how much do you want to invest of our time to get it to a point? To, to what point? Or are you happy with it right now? I really wish somebody would take a look at it and say, what do you?
I'll have to go over and look at it also.
Actually, I, I have an idea that might help everybody, uh, uh, Ben, what if you and I, uh, take a look in there? And, um, I, I, we can put Zoom on, on my phone and we'll record it. And we'll just kind of walk around and kind of dictate what you see. And then we have that recording and then we can provide that recording to everybody, so everybody's not trying to get in there all at once. And that way we have a record of where we are, what dates, what needs to get done. Um, and everybody can kind of review it. And maybe discuss it at the, uh, at the next board meeting, unless we need to get done before that, but at least it's all recorded.
Keith, now you thinking of doing it, uh, Thursday or Friday this week?
I can do it whenever Ben's available.
The reason I ask is I'm available Thursday or Friday. I'd like, like to join you guys.
Yeah, I mean, I really think that the in-person experience is not to be beat. If any, I'll make, I'm certainly not adverse to doing a walk-in.
It's very dark in there, Keaton, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, we could just bring a really bright flashlight and.
Yeah, you have to bring, yeah, because you can't plug anything in, obviously. I took a lot of photos before they removed the debris, um, so I have those all on file. I took a lot of interiors, but it's been what, three months, right, Ben? That took those?
At least.
Yeah, but if you want me to take more pictures, um, let me know, I can do that.
I, I, I'm just looking for direction from the board, where we're going with this, because it's my gut, you know, what I would do is keep going. If we just want to stop and hold right now, then let me know.
You know, with weather permitting, since, you know, it's, if weather permitting, if we could do more of the work, I would say go for it, you know, if we're not doing anything. You know, right now it's really not snowing that badly because we can't work outside in the yard, in the, um, park, so that's my feeling. So if you could do a little by little at least.
I, I have no objection to that.
But is this something that you want to do reference to? Okay, okay.
I mean, it can't hurt. I mean, if you've got, if you've got guys looking for work, I suppose, what's, you know, what's the harm?
Yeah, that's how I feel.
Agree.
Okay. Okay.
I guess it won't be tomorrow, it's supposed to snow, right?
Exactly. Now, we've been blessed with a gentle winter, but I just, I don't know. We, we are now the, the proud owners of a building that is in great disrepair. How far do we want to go right now? Our own forces to get it.
Yeah, I guess for the time being, you know, in my, in my mind's eye, I thought we were getting, you know, bear studs, bear joists. So we can at least, you know, move towards that and then if there's structural renovations that need to be done or tenant build outs and drywall that needs to be done, insulation, whatever. I think that's all part of, you know, like the, the depot guys, if the depot guys want to have offices on the second floor, that's part of their cost to do that. You know, whatever might be the case.
I agree, in my mind's eye, it was going to be a lot better than it is.
Yeah, well, okay.
Expectations are always greater than reality, right? So. All right, but that gives me some sense of direction. Uh, thank you.
Old business, uh, nothing new on the Null Pavilion. Thank you.
All right, um, trustee Yates.
Um, I think though the old business, we kind of electric bicycles, obviously that's a moot point at this point, uh, until later. Um, the trees, I think we were there was a standard form, I think that Ben, you said you could get a hold of if we wanted to do that, and that's not something we need to decide today to do anyway, because it's not budgeted, um, for a union. And then the lights, we've just got to wait to kind of talk to WBA. I don't think it made it. Keaton, did that come up at the, the meeting, the last WBA meeting by any chance?
No, it didn't. Um, there was, it was a very slim, slim meeting. A lot of people were either missing due to their own circumstances or, you know, some people even had the inauguration ceremony on in the background as, as the meeting was going on. It was a very quick 22-minute meeting, so.
Yeah, so, okay, we'll try to catch that at the February meeting, hopefully.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I, I, I just want to get it when there's a better turnout, you know?
Yep, I agree. No, that's fine. So that's all I have.
Okay, um, attorney Breco.
Uh, no, I don't really have anything and, uh, sorry, I had to jump off for a little bit. But, um, no, nothing really to report.
Okay, administrator Kendron.
No, I don't have anything.
Crew chief Villanen.
Yeah, we just got some updated prices on survey. Requested last meeting.
You want to go with the, uh, the old one first, just as a kind of refresher?
Yeah, why don't we pull up the proposal from SHUT first? I think they were, uh, in the, were, uh, $27 worth. Keep going down.
You and, uh, Eileen get a chance to go take a look at, uh?
No, we haven't yet.
Okay.
There you go, stop. No, we haven't.
Oops, that's right. Hmm. Got to look at them streets.
Anyone is certainly willing to, well, welcome to drive the streets of the village and offer their opinion on what shouldn't, shouldn't.
I really need to do that, you know, and no, thank you for reminding me, Matt.
Well, I, I just, I wanted to warn you, if you, if you hadn't, I wanted to warn you to avoid the, the the, uh, car-sized rut in front of my house, so just stay well clear of the edge of the road.
I want to go to Monore's Road. Where's Monore Drive?
Monore, yes.
Yeah, I like it. Good catch, they should be disqualified immediately.
I am gonna drive, I am gonna do that, I'll do that. Not tomorrow, it's gonna snow, but this week.
Yeah, the second proposal came in at 10,007 for the same survey. Work, uh, too unexpected there. The second firm, uh, that I requested numbers from is generally quite low.
Oh, so 10,007 for all three of them?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go, so. So we just saved $17,000?
Good.
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah.
That quick math there comes to, uh, 10,700.
Kind of lovely.
Yeah, yeah, always.
Good.
And I guess furthermore, looking at the, the price tag for all of the streets that we're looking to mill and pave. Right now, we're in about the $500,000 range, and that's before doing any of the extra drainage and curving. That's based off of prices from last year's paving that I bumped by a dollar a foot. Just for an idea of kind of order of magnitude that we're looking at right now.
Uh, generally speaking, what percentage will the state pick up on that?
They get about $100,000 a year from them.
Okay.
So about 25, so about 20%.
Assuming that all things are equal next year.
So the state has money to give us?
Right. They may have.
20% away this year.
Very close.
Gave us, and so the chips was 84. If they take 20% away, we're down to 70,000?
Does that include the EWR and?
That's supposed to disappear this year anyways. Um, I'm not sure about pave New York, what the status of that is. But considering we're 15 billion short, I can't imagine we're gonna get much.
You know.
But.
So that's, um, if you guys are interested in going forward with this, let me know. I guess we, the other question is where does it come from? The budget, because it's not currently budgeted for.
I'm just, I'm, so Keaton, can you, I'm confused with what, what this is here. So are we talking just the engineering costs?
No, this is a survey only.
So, uh, basically, right?
Sorry, was that?
10,700, so, uh, Keaton, can you flip back to the other screen? Shut proposal, so, so Deb, line B. Scratch out 27, 258 and put in 10,007.
Okay.
So then, you know, design services of 7,500. So really, what I think, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're asking for is for us to find some way to justify 7,500 plus 10,700.
Yeah, yeah, essentially.
Eight, $18,200. And maybe an extra thousand there for line one.
Yeah, which.
Call it 19,000.
19,000 for, for, for right now to get us to a point where we have design documents and firm numbers, estimate numbers. Or whatever streets will be paved in 2021.
Right.
So how much overall would, is the paving be? And then, you know, adding this on to it?
Overall, the paving is, you know, again, scratch numbers here, about $500,000 plus the $32,000 engineering, 10,007. And about $50,000 for programs, so you're looking at 54 to, for 542,000 for this year's paving project.
And do we, Judy, are we bonding that?
Typically, that's what we would do, yes. Um, we still have not been able to finish.
Typically, that's what we would do, yes. Um, we still have not been able to finish our bonding from last year. So I will send an email out to John Alessi to see where that stands.
So if we were, so, I mean, basically, the, what we talked about last time is, and thank you, Ben, for trying to get this going sooner, I mean, the a couple of things is that, one, in our next budget meeting, we should plan on having engineering services for the following year's work budgeted in the the prior year's budget, right? We always sort of lump the two of them together. But unfortunately, what that means is, is that we don't get our engineering started until it's prime paving season, at which point our paving doesn't go in until November.
Right.
Right? So right now, we find ourselves looking for, let's call it a nice round twenty thousand dollars out of our current year's budget, essentially to float ourselves for the engineering costs for next year's paving.
Right.
Correct.
With the idea that we could get real budget numbers and have real concept of what we're doing, and even maybe even bid it and have real contractors ready to go June one, when the fiscal year starts.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Right. So the question.
I don't know why it hasn't been done that way, you know? But I would, I would suggest going forward that we try to, you know, shoot ahead on these engineering costs.
So the question is, where do we find twenty thousand dollars today?
Judy, anywhere?
Well.
I've got some assignments.
Al?
What, what we could do is.
Sorry, Judy, what?
Start the capital project for the twenty twenty-one road paving. And then basically, we use do to do from. And eventually, general fund gets paid back once, um, bonding is done. So basically, we lend money to the project through, um, that either through the budget or through what ultimately would come through the, um, fund balance.
Okay. That sounds good.
Yeah.
So do we need a resolution for that at the next board meeting then?
To approve the, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We can do that.
Guess put it on the agenda then.
Yeah, that that's good, and I'll, um, try to see what other additional ahead of time work we can get done.
Okay, and I'll try and find out where we sit with last year's bonding. And then we'll move forward.
Okay.
It's going to be an interesting budget meeting.
It will.
I guess that's all I have for now. Been a busy couple of weeks. Gone on, but I don't think it's germane to our conversations tonight.
Okay, um, Keaton, you have a couple of items?
Yes, I do. Um, U R P, um, I mentioned earlier, um, so I don't think I need to mention that now. I just decided to kind of take a look. NICOMS. I don't know if, uh, Judy, you got, um, around to any of this information yet, but NICOMS next conference will be virtual. This is the winner conference. Thursday, February eleventh. Is is it on the screen? Did I do it right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, so it's Thursday, February eleventh. Um, just wanted everybody to know now, because the the next meeting is just a couple of days before this. One day, all virtual goes eight thirty to four. Here is the hold on one second, I can get the rates and everything. You should be.
It would be fifteen dollars.
So, you know, and I mean, this is, this is kind of different, too. Um, I mean, if you were at a, at a regular session, there might be one or two of you out of a group of four or five that may go to the same session. Because it's virtual, I mean, I don't want to be or anything like that, but we could put it on in the conference room and have two or three people in there, you know, and and watching, because it's all one long day of different sessions. Um, it's not like there's any breakout groups or anything like that, so.
What's the agenda on it again?
Uh, hold on one second. It should be up there now. Starts at thirty with an overview of the state of, say, Albany. And gets right into things at nine AM with the implications of the proposed budget. So, um.
All right.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit in on it, so whatever.
Okay.
Can do that in the conference room. I'm fine with that. I'll just come here.
Looks like, it looks like within the topical workshops, you have a choice of three.
Right.
Right. That would be, I guess, would be the breakout groups then, you know, so. Yeah, at least for a few hours, there's no breakout groups. But, yeah, so I guess it's something to, uh, kind of look at, think about. You know, who who might want to do different workshops or whatever, so. But, uh, again, the date is Thursday, February eleventh, so. And I'm sure, um, you know, they're they're pretty good about it, so I'm sure some of these will be recorded and allowed us, you know, will allow us to watch at a different time, should any of us miss these, so. All right, so that's that. And the final thing was, um, diversity committee updates. So actually, when I did the agenda, it was the diversity committee, and now it's the cultural conversations committee. So I will speak in the present tense, the cultural conversations committee. Last week, uh, they met, and during their meeting, they, they, or two weeks ago now, they decided that they wanted to alter their mission statement a little bit. Um, so they updated that and provided me, um, the updated statement, which is, uh, on the web. And they also mentioned possibly using a company that allows you to, uh, purchase email addresses from a certain segment of the population, whether it be, uh, people who are, they could be, you know, registered, uh, Democrats or independents, or it could be by geographic location, by zip. They wondered, and and they'd like to do it, they'd like to purchase email addresses zip code, which would be one, four, two, two, one. Judy and I looked into this, and to go with a company would be about ninety dollars. It's not necessarily the cost that I'm worried about. I just, you know, and I even, uh, I did mention this to Chip last week. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure, maybe he could, uh, chime in after a couple of minutes here, but, you know, in in my opinion, because all of this would have to be uh, funneled through the village. With their idea being, they would access these email addresses, and then they'd send out information. Uh, whether it be, you know, our next meeting is this date, or we're at this event, or please come join us. This is what we do. This is our mission. Their idea is just to kind of get known and get people, uh, to their events and meetings. But I'm not sure a government should be buying access to residential email accounts to solicit on behalf of its own committee. You know, it would be different if they requested it, if the residents requested it, such as what we do with our newsletter, where they actually type in their email address, and it comes back to me that they want to be part of the newsletter, and then we send out that newsletter because they've requested it. Whereas this would basically be purchasing information, um, that they don't know about. And the problem.
What?
Fishes, yeah.
I don't like this idea either.
The problem with it is, the the zip code idea.
Yeah.
We have three municipalities in our zip code. We have Clarence, Amherst, and Williamsville itself. So it could go to somebody in Clarence, and not to say that that person wouldn't be a great fit. But, you know, somebody who's out near Clarence on the center, you know, should they be a member of this Williamsville-based committee?
More importantly, do they even want to start getting the spam in their in, in their inbox?
Yeah, exactly.
Think they like to spam? There there's just a whole host of of issues that, uh, uh, Judy and I thought of with this, and, you know, it's
It's just not a good idea.
I think, I think, everyone put your thumb up or down?
Thumb, thumbs down.
Great idea. If you are like a a club, not in a government, you know, if you are Alliance Club Rotary.
No, you, you.
We're a government, you know?
It doesn't, it doesn't sound, it's not a good idea.
We have, we have enough of a reach between our press contacts and Nextdoor and Facebook, Twitter and anything else. You can easily get the word out.
Page, exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Facebook has thousands, we have seven hundred subscribers on the newsletter, and like Matt said, we also have Nextdoor. There's plenty of resources to get it out, to get it funneled into a, a, a reliable place. Not a place where maybe it's spam, maybe it's not, maybe the person who lives here, maybe they're in California, you know?
Is he getting kicked out?
Basil getting kicked out. Where is he?
He's at Wegmans.
Wegmans.
In Chautauqua County.
That's funny.
Oh, I couldn't, I didn't, couldn't figure out where he was. I thought he was in the garage somewhere.
Marion kicked him out.
That's all I have, though, so thank you for that, and, uh.
I was just going to say to this point, I remember when we were in the meeting, they brought up purchasing a list, and it, you know, I I never looked at it from the perspective that you just took. And the more that we talk about it, I didn't say it was a good idea. I think we had enough of a list, because I could even see us approaching WBA for their list, because their their reach was, they were afraid that there were people that weren't involved now, and they wanted to reach those people. Like, the ones we had the list on now, their feeling was as well, they, we want them to be involved, and maybe they don't feel involved now, so that was kind of the, 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 their approach on it. Uh, but I agree, if you purchase a list and I get an email showing up a village of Williamsville about something, it seems strange when I didn't solicit it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, Al, I would, I would just say to, to the cultural conversations committee that I always believed that if you really want to be involved, there are more than enough opportunities in the day and age that we live in with technology to become involved. So I feel that those people who want to be involved, want to understand what's going on in the village, why decisions are being made the way that they are. There is a newsletter that we publish quarterly. We have a very active, up-to-date Facebook page. We have a fabulous website. And so my message to the committee would be that, you know, I feel that the people who want to be involved have already done their homework, and they know how to be involved. And I think that that's, you know, the this whole idea of purchasing a, an email list just is is quite ridiculous to me, because I I feel that, you know, the folks who want to be informed will find a will and a way to become informed.
Yep, I agree. Well, their reach was also one, wanted to be outside necessarily of a resident that may be on our list, was also those who visit. They want to make sure that even visitors alike felt welcome. So I I get that from that perspective, but I agree, I don't, I don't know that we need to purchase lists. It could go on and on.
I think in the past, we've tried to eliminate having anyone outside of, um, pretty much outside of Keaton's role, that can
distribute that, that.
Yeah, to distribute information online or or through email. It's, anything like that should be coming from someone at Village Hall, not through committee members.
Yeah, and I don't think they wanted to do it on their own. It would have been through Keaton. I think they were looking to do a survey, and they, they want to make sure they got an extensive list for a survey of what, you know, what this committee, what does the public feel that this committee should work on to make visitors alike, you know, feel welcome in the village and come to the village, and then also the residents as well. So that was, I think, their ask, or they didn't want to take control of sending out the, the message, just, they wanted to get a good population when they do a survey of, 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 of a good population, you know, instead of just what we already had, right? So.
Just thinking outside the box, which is great, it's just, it's, it's not a good fit for us.
No, I agree, yeah. So, but I am glad you vetted it, and I can give that back to them and let them know, you know, that we're not going to purchase a list, and explain why that we feel as a board, it's not really necessary, and the way it looks, uh, you know, on the optics end of it. So, yeah, I agree.
All right. Um, the only other thing I I was going to mention is that, uh, with, um, the Williamsville Central Schools, um, kind of, uh, getting into a, a period of transition now, as they search for a new superintendent, the current, uh, the interim superintendent is resuming the community council meetings that they used to hold. They used to hold them every, I believe it was every three months, two to three months. And, um, the next one is Wednesday, and I've been invited to, uh, you know, attend them, so, um.
Wednesday of this week?
Yes, Wednesday of this week, yeah.
Because I used to order those all the time.
Oh, did you? Oh, okay. Yeah, this one's on Zoom.
Is it on the morning?
Yes, uh, nine to ten thirty. I I can send you the information if you'd like, so.
You do, although I might not make that one, because I, I I won't be back in town that early.
Oh, okay.
That day. Yeah, go ahead, go to it to the tech event.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I I thought it'd be a good, you know, just really good information for us to have. You know, so.
I will also, I will also be on that meeting, Keaton.
Oh, okay, great. Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Does anybody have anything else before we, I, that's before we wrap up here tonight?
Has anyone driven down South Cayuga recently?
Yes, yeah, so I got linked out this morning.
That means you were going to say.
What did I miss? Wait a minute, what's on South Cayuga?
That, you were ten over.
Yeah.
So the radar speed signs are up on South Cayuga, Eileen?
Oh, okay.
Good idea.
And I can tell you, because, um, I see it all the time, they, it's incredible how great they are working. Like, I was kind of skeptical a little bit. It it was almost like one of those things, the magic pill, like, it seemed too good to be true. But when you see people approaching and that red light blinks on, everybody slows down and they, they keep the thirty miles for the entire strip of the street until they turn the corner where you can't see anymore, but but that's the town anyhow, is you turn the corner, so. So I I was surprisingly, and I will, I've already talked to Ben about our budget. When we sit down, we will be budgeting for several more of those to place in the village.
Great.
Yeah, I've been behind a number of cars, and they, they all slow down as soon as they see the sign. So I I've seen it.
The lasting impact of it is.
Yeah.
Um, once it gets old.
Yeah, so, um, so, yeah, so that's, that's good news.
Good, I'll take it.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else from anyone? Any other thoughts or anything we missed?
Nope.
So our next meeting is Monday, February eighth? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then our budget meeting is Saturday, February twentieth. And then we'll have a board meeting on February twenty-second. So everybody, um, I I'm guessing is talking to your committees and seeing what they are requesting as far as budgets, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, you know, and we should also be thinking of things that we feel are important and that we would like to ask and budget for. and that we would like to ask and budget for.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and, uh, and then also be thinking about, uh, where we are going with the employee's, um, payroll budget as well.
Right.
Okay.
And budget, we're hoping to have budget sheets back to Hazel and I by next Monday, so that we can start inputting the numbers and working on tax rates.
Judy, how's like the sales tax coming into effect with, I know, you know, where we're at. I know we don't have a huge percentage of it that we rely on, but still.
We're down about 7,000 from what we received last year at the same time. However, we're still well over budget. So we're doing okay at this time. I'll see how the rest of the, the fiscal year plays out. You know, see how the, the holiday shopping went. We'll know more the end of March, beginning of April, because that's usually our very big quarter.
Okay, because that's where you get the holiday numbers sent by.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, the sheet that Catherine sends us, the Excel spreadsheet only showed, uh, we were down over the year like 3% or that would be a deposit, so it, it's probably not going to make as much of an impact for us, so.
Right.
Yeah. So, let's see.
Yeah. Okay, um, so if you're interested in the NICOM meeting, let Keaton know, and, um, we can go from there.
All right.
And then I understand, Keaton, I think you told me that the meeting in September, the NICOM meeting, they're planning on having that live, is that correct?
I don't know. I don't know if I, uh.
You can tell me that, or somebody told me that?
I think it said something on the website or in an email that they sent us.
Yeah, something, it was supposed to be just back in person, like normal, so.
Right.
So we'll see where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see, you know, why, why it couldn't by then, hopefully, so, yeah, that would be great. Yeah, fingers crossed, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, well, I don't have anything else, so I'll say goodnight to everyone. Thanks for coming and.
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
Goodnight, everybody. Thank you.
Get him safe, Basil.
Yeah.
I'll see ya. Bye-bye.
Bye.